To call this meeting to order to begin, can we have, start with the flag. Before we, one announcement tonight, we had a suggestion before we approved agenda to move the auto club audit to a later date. So you'll see it number three on the business item, so we're just gonna move it to a later date. Okay, can I get, here, can I get an motion to adopt agenda? Justice first, father second, all in favor? Passes. Okay. Usually go to time for students, but before we do that, embrace as we move to talk. Grace, I just want to thank you for all your time this year, it's been amazing. You are one unique individual, you are going to be amazing. You're so dedicated, you're very well spoken, you understand issues, you collaborate very well with your board colleagues around the table. Your parents should be so proud, because I tell you, once you step out of these walls, you are gonna do great things, kids, so. Thank you for your time with us, I know it's, you know, you've been here during snowstorms and everything, you didn't let us down at all. And your Senate colleagues, great group of, great group of students and just have taken, have taken their thoughts and initiatives far this year, even during the COVID pandemic. So, everybody should be very proud of all your efforts this year, but I wanted to personally thank you for everything.
Okay, it's on now, okay. First of all, I would just like to say thank you so much. I'm not leaving just yet, just because I, I would feel really, really bad to start someone off in the middle of the summer, so I will be here for, I think, two more meetings, but anyway. Thank you for that. Second of all, I would just like to briefly, before our old Senate reps turn it over to the new ones, we have our new officer team here today, so I will let them, I will give them their time when they come up, I will let, update on that one. But lastly, I would actually like to discuss a painting that I did through the district office a few months ago. So, it's on the display case in high school east right now, and it's a painting of Mr. Delalo that I wanted to, and I was thus explained it, and I'm glad that I was, because that means that I did something right when I painted it. My initial thoughts doing it were honestly just, because the theme of the profile was Shen graduate, was that this was, he, he was one of the first people that I really realized that the people here care and have put in the work and genuinely try to understand students, you know, continually. And I, I wanted to be able to commemorate that, to represent that, to be able to make that live on in something visually, and with what talents or whatever skill I had at hand, to be able to make that into something, so.
I'm trying to get your picture, Grace.
Yeah, so, with, with that at least, I, immediately after that came out, I knew that that was the thing that I wanted to paint, and that was the thing that I wanted to do. Not only does he deserve it as a board member, former teacher, but also as a person that's just impacted my life, the same way that everyone else around this table has as well. In both my journey throughout high school, how I've been able to help people and think that that matters, so, thank you to all of you, and it's the, well, this is me to figure out what it is.
Grace, that's awesome.
Thank you. So, that's, all the pieces in there are going into the district office. They were created by students, all of them, I believe, and I know Mrs. David, she coordinated them, so, with her, I know people worked on it through the National Honor Society, and people, I believe, worked on it outside of that as well. Just want to highlight that.
Great job, Grace.
Thank you very much. Hope it's fun.
Four comments. No, Joe, Gosa?
Grace, I just want to say that I know you're not leaving quite yet.
Do you remember?
Yeah. I know you're not leaving quite yet, but it has been a pleasure to have you, and you're a phenomenal young lady, and I look forward to hearing all the great things that you will do, so, keep us posted.
Grace, I echo, I, I, it's really hard to say any more than what Deanna and Gosa have said, you, you've served during a time of great uncertainty, and you've done it with thoughtfulness, and you really, you very much represent the student, the students' stakeholders in our district, and, you know, to take something from Hamilton, you were in the, you were at the table where it happened, and I, I, I don't know who it is, I'm sure we're gonna find out soon, who's gonna be serving in your place as you move on, but you've been here for a year and a half, it's gonna, it's gonna be a very, it's gonna be a big change, and I'm sure that person will be looking to you for guidance, and I know that he will continue to serve in that way. You're, you're an excellent representation of what the Senate is and what it does, and I'm so, I feel blessed to know you. Thank you.
Thank you, Naomi, Jason? Nothing, nothing.
Can you hear me?
I can certainly hear you, Bob.
Right now, in the, probably the challenging last two months of a very demanding year, so, I have two things I would just like to get into the public as we proceed through the summer. One is from attending Scanon Partnership, comments there from Scanon Principal indicate that we're getting to be a very whole elementary school. And this is a sign we want to look for, because prior to COVID, there was always discussion about potentially redistricting between schools, because some schools get a larger population, some schools get a smaller population, but that is a major challenge, and so, I think we need to think about over the next few months, do we want to think about redistricting? There are need, there's reasons to do it, there's reasons you may want to defer it, but the last time we did here in this district was before I got on board, so we don't have any board member now that hasn't gone through redistricting. So if we are gonna face that decision, let's make sure we, we, we figure it out, we do it right, so that is a challenge for the district as we, as we go through that. Second one, also in the same vein of being a long-term impact, just want to get my thoughts on the campaign for board election the last month. Lots of differences this year versus three years ago. Three years ago, we had three seats and really two candidates that signed petitions, this year, we had nine candidates. I think everyone in the public was very appreciative. There are nine candidates, and all of them were well-rounded, they, they were focused on the district. But with that number, we also got a sense that there was a level of unfairness here. We had a very brief candidate forum, and with nine candidates, you really can't get a chance to get to know everybody, or see where they stand, or feel where they stand. The other thing that came through from discussions and members of the public, not a, a document that could provide everybody a great comparative list of answers to questions, something came through the last couple days from the Parent Teacher Association, but really people in the community felt that with nine candidates, how do you pick one? And so, if they came down to sometimes signage, sometimes who knows who on Facebook, and I, I think we want to figure out a way that we as a community can better address this. We've got a year to figure it out, maybe, I'd say, eight months. One key, key part of this is that as a district, we can't show favoritism, the superintendent can't come in and be the guy of this, okay? We can't expect a board candidate, a board member that is a current candidate, to be the person involved with discussing how you improve the process. If they're a participant, they can listen, but I think we also need to understand, there are others besides those two groups, superintendent and current board candidate, that should figure out, how do you improve the process? In such a way that, you know, perhaps the questions, the answers to questions in a comparative context, so people can fairly assess that, perhaps more time for, or more candidate forums, like in order particularly of non-candots. One night for two questions, and you're relying, in that case, very much on the technology. I don't think next year we'll have that, but, but figure out a way that you can be more encompassing and more fair to the candidates that have gone through this. And as a candidate, my fourth time, I was amazed at the number of questions that I hadn't answered, right? I, I think it would come out about thirty-five. Okay, we're asking people to volunteer for something that is not paid, and they're gonna be contributing quite a bit of their time, and yet we pound them with a lot of questions. I had eighteen, you know, that we didn't worry. In each one of them, I honestly felt I needed to put a lot of time in it. So that, that's what we're facing next year, but hopefully we can figure out a way to perhaps increase fairness, put more accessibility to members of the public, and also work closely with the collective bargaining groups, because as we're seeing, they are, they're conveying things more into public forums versus what they've done in the past, which is just. So I'm putting it out there, I think that's a challenge, it's something we can figure out, I look forward to working with all the board members, as well as members of the community, to do this in a way to improve the process, so. Thanks very much, that's all I have.
So, as the, as the last time to have public comments before the end of the school year, I'm gonna address the seniors for my comments. You guys have had a crap-tastic two years, and I know there's some here, and I know there's some out in the hallway. You've had, you've shown a lot of resilience, and you persevered through a, what can only be explained as a once-in-a-lifetime situation. You got, and I'll be blunt here, you got screwed out of your prom this year, and last year, but you have all kept your spirits up, and in two and a half weeks, we're gonna have eight hundred some-odd students graduating in person, and you should all be proud, you should all be proud of what you've come through, it's gonna make you all stronger. Yes, it may not have been what your parents went through when they graduated, or what your peers went through a few years ago when they graduated, but you all deserve to know that we're all proud of you. And it's gonna be an awesome college, hopefully college will be better in the last two years, but we've done everything we can for you, and we're all proud of you, so, that's it.
Oh God, why would you do that, Tom? Here are the seniors, so, I can't even talk about it without tearing up yet, so I don't know how I'm gonna make, address the whole eight hundred kids and thousands of parents, but we'll get there, we'll get there. Just a couple comments from me tonight, quickly. Bob, thank you for your comments, and, you know, we were throwing around as a board to actually, we're gonna talk about this more in our retreat, and how we might work with district leadership to do this, but to do a board forum in the way that the community starts to understand what it's like to be a board member, and maybe that's a roundtable discussion that's videoed, I don't know, but definitely something that needs to be out there, because I can't tell you how many, how many people have reached out, not just this year, but previous years, to find out, what is it really like to be a board member? So, I think that would be one thing that we definitely want to start to discuss. The other piece I do want to talk about, and quickly, and I know, I'm sure Dr. Robinson will touch about, touch upon it, is the rules and regulation and processes that came out from New York State this week. Little hairy time, it kind of threw me back to the beginning of the school year, obvious September timeline, where we received a lot of commentary from the community, more negative than positive, obviously, because when the governor put out that we were going to, it was up to the school district to make, make the determination of whether masks will be worn, that is a very, it's, in my opinion, and quite, quite frankly, it's a very haphazard way of doing things. You know, that's not what a school district is in business to do, we're here to educate children and students. So, as you can tell, it, it, it was a little, the week wasn't great, but at the end, you know, you push back, your lobby, state ed came, came in and put their comments out there, thank God, and then, the political, the political leaves start flailing off the tree again, and then lo and behold, now we don't have to wear masks when we're outside. So, Dr. Robinson, God bless you and your, and your leadership and all the schools and our students, because it's like whiplash every, every day. So I wanted to put that out there, that truly not a fair process, but we have weathered worse, and we will continue to show our determination and what we're, what we stand for here at Shen in the Hall. So I just wanted to put that there. Okay. Going forward, Sue, I'm going to let Grace at this point for the students to talk, and you can talk about the Senate and what next year will bring.
All right. Now it's on, okay. I think I would have gotten it the first time, but no. So, as of right now, we have the majority of next year's officer team, so Trinity and you, Jake, who are last year's Senate reps to the board, who would like to give, I guess, like a status quo update, because as of right now, I guess this will be your, your goodbye, handing it off to, and have next year come up as well. It's like handing it off to them.
So good to see students up here.
Oh, it's so good.
All right, as you can see right here, that the majority are next year's Senate team, they, I assure you, they're just as qualified as our board qualified as our Senate team last year, and I'm sure that it will be a very productive 2022, 2023, 2025.
I would just like to say thank you to the board for letting me serve as your Senate Board of Education representative. Those, you know, Google meets at seven o'clock when my computer decides to fight me at six fifty-five was, you know, sometimes rocky, frustrating at some point, but, you know, as, you know, board members have shared today, we all persevered through it, we all figured it out, you know, through our Chromebook or got a new one, but I think that, you know, going through that, of course, definitely strong itself. A lot, thank you for allowing me to have a position. And I would now like to call up our secretary for Senate of next year.
Hi, my name is Shaila Holier, I'm gonna be. Hi, my name is Shaila Holier, I'm gonna be your new secretary for SFA Senate. I'm really excited to be working with you all and just bringing changes to Shen, I'm just really glad to be a part of this process. And I would also like to, like, I would also like to say Michael Fane, who's our deputy secretary, he wasn't able to be here today, unfortunately, but he also wanted me to play guys, he's really excited to be working with you, and he just, he can't wait to start new year. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Kellen Gunner, I will be serving next year as the Senate rep to the Board of Ed alongside Neil Lazarus, who will introduce himself next. I've served this past year on the PTSA as a student liaison, and I hope that some of my skills will translate. I am excited to offer my dedication and service on next year, and I'm excited to work with all you all to incite, to create. To create change, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone, my name is Neil Lazarus, and I will be serving as your other Board of Education, oh wait, no, as your other representative to Board of Education, I'm very excited to work with all you this year, as you can see from my mask, I'm really into advocacy, and I will push that this year, so, yeah.
Congratulations, guys.
Hello, everyone, my name is Andre Ademino, and I was SFA secretary this past year, and it's pretty clear to say that last year, or this past year, has been pretty, pretty weird, and has a lot of change, as we've all said, and talking to the other officers, it was very clear that it was a bit harder this year to get done as much as we wanted to do this year, especially going into the school year, despite having gotten done a lot, but I'm really excited to work with the board and my, my new officer team to make the change that we wanted to do originally, and even more to come.
Hello, everyone, my name is Jason Ornstein, and I'm gonna be your upcoming Senate treasurer. Over the past two years, I've had the honor of serving on a variety of district committees this past year, serving alongside Ms. Hoffman and Ms. Miller on the high school partnership team, I'm excited to get to work hopefully next year as COVID rates continue to decline, and we can get back to planning events and continuing to create change, so, thank you.
Before I speak, Grace, would you like to say?
Oh, sure. I think I would, but I'm great. I'm gonna be serving next year as the vice president of Senate, so, this lovely seat will be given away soon, in the summer, to, although she does not know it yet, Olivia Kelly, just so you guys know who that is.
Yeah.
She'll be formal later, later on this week, but, given my experience here and working last year as deputy secretary, I both love and am so grateful for the people that I have around me for Senate, and I'm excited to continue to be able to work on things that we started last year, and on new things, and just in general, trying to make sure that the school environment is as best represented, as well as, you know, as exciting as we can make it, especially now with events with COVID rates dropping, as previously mentioned, we have a lot of room to work with, and I'm excited to take that on.
Thank you, Grace.
Thank you, Grace, okay. So, hi, I'm Trinity Sanders, rising senior in the class of 2022, and I was recently elected president of SFA Senate, thank you. And ever since I got elected, some peers and faculty have come to me to congratulate me on being the first black SFA Senate president that Shen has seen, and although that's very important to me and who I am becoming, I would first like to take time to look around the room. Here today, we don't just stand as individuals, but we stand as people that work towards a common interest of making Shen a better place. This might seem cliche, but it matters. It matters because the lives of students matter, not just the lives of certain group of students, but the lives of all students. And secondly, I want to turn my attention to the amazing officer team that I have the honor of having this year. I am proud to say that as an officer team, we look to continuously uphold the integrity, determination, compassion, and leadership that every senator has. We have vowed to represent every student in the best way possible while developing our abilities to lead with the utmost excellence. Thank you to the Senate for offering us this opportunity to represent our peers, and we plan to fulfill not just promises, but our commitments. Thank you.
Welcome and congratulations. So, no, they can, no, if, if, if you guys, you know, I understand, it is still school night, and, you know, we don't have to stay here, but if you want to. You want it. So, this, this is an opportunity for the public to address Board of Education, because this meeting is being held with limited in-person attendance, if you are a district resident, please send questions and concerns, comments via boe@shenschools.org. All questions, comments come into the Office of Public Information Officer and our shared with the board and/or superintendent. The board will not address specific questions, comments, but ask for your name and address in the event follow-up is necessary. Policy questions, concerns are typically addressed by the board president, operational questions, concerns are typically addressed by superintendent and/or designated. With that, do we have anything I can report? We don't have anybody to pull with that, come up right, we're not doing that, okay? So at this point, Dr. Robinson, would you like to, to report?
So, I'm, I'm gonna postpone portion of my report when it's, I'll be presentation, instead start off with a showcase of our student athletes, recognizing that we have probably thirty-plus youngsters standing in the hallway, and while they used to be outside in the square three B, they thought they were coming inside to escape the heat, but the hallway is like another summer, so I'm sure they appreciate the extra time. So, Mr. Cole will come forward, and as he does, just want the public to, to know that this year is a little bit different because of the COVID situation in terms of how we recognize our student athlete. Last time, Mr. Rosello was here, recognizing students in music and drama, and that's something that the board has done and do up throughout the course of the year, trying to recognize our students across the board, and I say that because sometimes someone will see the one meeting, and he has athletes who say, you ought to do this, you ought to do that, but this happens across the board throughout the course of the year, and you certainly want to do that, so, with that being said, Mr. Cole, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson. I would like to thank Dr. Robinson, the Board of Education, for what has been a interesting year, to say the least, in the world of intercellastic athletics. Going back to March of 2020, Dr. Robinson and I were riding down from Glen's Falls Civic Center, and we were driving down to Hudson Valley to watch our girls play, from the boys to the girls championship, and Dr. Robinson was sharing with me information that he was getting from statewide officials about a concern over this virus that was kind of going around, and, you know, I didn't really think much of that, and now we fast-forward to fifteen months later, and it's been kind of a surreal experience. When Dr. Robinson and I spoke back in August, you know, he would say to me, I, I think we're gonna have sports, but it's gonna look different, you have to determine what and how it's gonna look different. You know, we had really hard conversations, you know, are we gonna play football in the fall? Football was played in March and April of this year, boys volleyball was played in March and April, totally off sequence of what we normally do. We didn't have state championships for these athletes, we didn't have sectionals, we were able to have suburban council championships. The reason that I want to thank the Board of Education was giving us the opportunity, statewide, very few, very few sections played fall sports, field hockey, soccer, cross-country, and I think our board, our superintendent, allowed me the opportunity to go out and say that we're ready to do this and be a leader in our area and in the suburban council, and it, and it paid off. I'm extremely proud of the plan in our department, that our coaches executed, that was executed within our office. Again, coming back to, you know, Dr. Robinson and I had meetings, you know, we, we would drive around and we would see soccer players putting their book bags down in grid squares, we would see field hockey players putting their, their bags down at cones to be socially distant. You know, out at the track, we're hosting sectionals over the course of three days for our track and field athletes, and, you know, in years past, we wouldn't think of anything of hosting either the sectionals, or, you know, the, the state qualifiers and putting four to five hundred people in our facility. And I was driving over with Coach Weeks, and then I said, boy, we did this right by doing it over the course of three days, and it's not exactly what sectionals has been for athletes, but it's sectionals, and they're getting the opportunity to compete, and when you talk to the athletes, they're very appreciative of that. A number that I want to share with the Board of Education is, I had a goal this year that every senior athlete would get their season, and, and we set a goal in my department, with all of our staff, our coaches, we said, every senior's gonna get their season, we've gotta figure out what it's gonna look like, we gotta figure out how we're gonna advocate. We had two hundred and twenty-five seniors that got their, that got their senior season, so over thirty percent of the senior class was able to participate in their senior seasons. There's nobody who was able to participate that did not get their season. They were masked up, they were socially distanced, they were in pods, they were in cohorts, they had their parents drive them, everything else, they wiped the equipment down in between sets and all this other stuff, but they made it, they made it work. Just before getting to the, the teams, a lot of you saw the Yeva Klingbile story, that's been kind of resonating nationally, Rob had sent me that video, and I really thought that, you know, what Rob does with Yeva really resonates, and that's sort of what embodies the spirit of a lot of our program, you know, and Yeva's perseverance is just remarkable, and it's a great story for everybody to see, and it was picked up nationally, and I sent an email to coaches just reminding them that our job next year is a reconnection with student athletes, that we have to continue to reconnect with our student athletes to make sure that our portion of the school experience is still important for them and for us, so I'm looking forward to that, I'm looking forward to all these, all these things that we can continue to do. The first team I want to bring up, the first team I want to bring up is our girls swimming and diving team, Coach Alyssa DiFabio is in her first year, she had an interesting first year, she got hired last, last spring, and I brought her in, had all these meetings with her, and then we didn't have a pool to swim in for, for about five months, and it's, you know, swimming is such a cardiovascular, you know, activity that you have to continually do it to stay sharp. Dr. Robinson gave me permission, actually, Mr. Barrett's here in the back, and he allowed us to go over and use the pool over at the, where were we, Barney Road, the Barney Road Pool, our girls were able to trade during the summer, I sat down, I met with Dr. Robinson, he said, what's the plan for the pool, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, all right, we're good, we got back in, and we have a suburban council championship team, Coach Alyssa DiFabio in her first year, and we're capsulay, come on up here, Alyssa, why don't you come on up here? Go ahead.
Hi, everybody, I just want to thank Dr.
I just want to thank um Dr. Robinson, Mr. Coleman, the entire Board for the countless hours that you guys put in to making our season happen. It was really greatly appreciated, especially for my captain Mia. Um, so I just, I, I can't express my gratitude for um this opportunity, especially since it was gonna be my first year um as the head coach for the Shenandoah Girls Team, so thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Um, I also just want to thank the Board and Mr. Coleman and Dr. Robinson for allowing us to have a season. It really meant a lot to not only the seniors, but like our entire team to just be able to get back in the water and swim. And then also, big thanks to Coach Alyssa because she really stepped up her game this year with it being our first year as head coach, and then also dealing with the whole pandemic, she really did a good job and helped us all out a lot.
Congratulations.
Yeah, it was pretty good.
Congratulations. Next up, we have, uh, and again, it's two years ago, uh, we came before the Board and we asked the Board to support us as part of the budget to introduce girls golf as part of our um, as part of our interscholastic sports program. Uh, us and Shaker were the only two schools that actually added coaches in, in the suburban council. Uh, I'm proud to say that next year we'll have eight teams that will have girls golf coaches and independent girls golf programs in the council, so we know that, again, us being a leader, um, we have two trailblazing athletes with us for, who are here with us, uh McKenna and Charlie, they're going on to play college at the collegiate level. And I just want to kind of highlight that, that if you think about it, two years ago, that opportunity for them didn't exist. And because of our superintendent, our Board of Education, that opportunity existed. Coach Christopher Dulu's leadership, uh, he knows how to run program, he's shown that in baseball, uh, he got these, he's got the girls in, we got great numbers in the girls' program, and we have two girls now who are gonna be going on and playing collegiate golf. So, and they're also suburban council champions. So Coach, come on up, girls. Come on up.
Very, uh, very proud to be here again and uh thank the Board of Education for their commitment to our student athletes. Uh, dedicated young ladies, I'm so proud to be uh their coach, their leader, but uh the season itself was extremely therapeutic uh to get the girls back out on the course, get them socializing, get them seeing the other girls that they play with and against in the summer. And um, you know, our success is really related to their commitment and their teammates' commitment and their parents driving them all over the place to and from golf courses late at night with uh, with their golf bags, with their book bags, with their lunch bags. And, you know, it looks like the United States Army coming in when they're coming to the golf course. Um, all the support from the Athletics Department, day in and day out, is, is unbelievable. Um, and, and to have these girls go on and play in college is, you know, speaks volumes. Uh, that opportunity wouldn't have existed, so we thank everybody for their commitment. By the way, they're undefeated in the league the last two years, uh, and uh second place uh two years ago in the sectional tournament, which uh we didn't have this year, but they're also two-year defending champion, suburban council championship.
Um, we'd like to thank Dr. Robinson, Mr. Coleman, and the Board for allowing us to have a season regarding the circumstances, and especially being seniors, and this is our second year playing golf. It was really nice to be able to get out there and play. Um, we want to say thank you to Mr. Christopher Dulu um for stepping up as a baseball coach to be our golf, girl golf coach, and yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Um, next up, we have a, we have a team that, uh, yeah, you guys, why don't you just kind of move toward the back, and I think probably that's right. Hey Greg, you want to tell Robbie to start getting, oh Robbie's at back there. Okay. Um, next up, we have a team that's no stranger to be in here, they're usually about fifteen of them, they're very tall individuals that usually come in every fall. I think they've been in for the last six falls, John, right? Yep. Okay. Uh, this year, again, you know, a team that was looking forward to playing in the potential state championship, they didn't have the state championships. I spoke to one of their athletes, I said, geez, how you guys doing with not being able to uh play in the state championships? And his response was, um, it, it's just great to be back on, on the court with our, with our teammates in the gym, and I think that's like, that really resonated with me. Um, once again, they didn't get a chance for sectionals, but they're suburban council champions. Um, Tyler uh played for us, he's gonna be one of the best, he was one of the best players we've ever had in school history, we've had other great players come through. Um, not to have that opportunity to go to states is tough, but the fact that they were able to compete and win the suburban council championship under the circumstances speaks volumes about what they are as a team. So I want to bring up Coach Kletta, Coach Halpern, and the boys, come on up.
So uh with this past year, um, and the decision to postpone the fall season, there was a lot of uncertainty about what our season would look like. Um, and we, I mean, I can't express enough gratitude for what the Board, um, Dr. Robinson, uh Christopher Coleman, um, even the custodial staff for cleaning up for us, taking care of the courts, uh everyone has worked so hard for us. And I think I really want to emphasize that this sport is not just a game that we play, this is a serious part of our life, and we take it very seriously. Um, and I think without the hard work that everyone has done for us, um, a lot of us wouldn't be uh competing at the collegiate level, we wouldn't have the opportunity to grow. And that means a lot to us senior athletes. Thank you very much.
I would also like to take the opportunity to thank uh Board of Education, our Athletic Department, Dr. Robinson, there's a, there's a lot of things going behind the scenes uh to give the opportunity for these boys to play. And our season, well, going back to the fall, I believe began with a very deep breath and a hold, like, how is this going to work this year? And a phrase we've been saying to the boys over the last several years that we picked up was embrace the dip. When things get bad, how are you gonna react to it? So we looked at this year as a year of growth, not just off the court, but also when we got the opportunity to get on the court, we knew it was still gonna be tough. Uh, so we appreciate all of your support, and I know I, I see we get, we get a lot of um, a lot of comments and a lot of feedback uh through our Athletic Department, so we really do appreciate uh everyone that's behind us to give these boys the opportunity to play, and we especially thank their parents. Uh, I couldn't believe how we got through uh the season without any issues, and I really attribute a lot of that to the parents being uh very involved in their, in their sons' and boys' lives and, and helping us to keep it all going. So it's been a, it's been a very positive experience, thank you.
Okay, next up, we have um a couple more of our fall sports teams. Uh, first up is uh, stay right there. Um, first up, we, it's right there. The generals marching up here, so. Um, first up, we have our, uh, we have our field hockey team. Once again, um, you know, this was one of those sports that not a lot of, not a lot of leagues in the area wanted to play. We were committed to being able to do it. Um, Coach Revola continued to lead. Um, in case you don't know, a lot of you, you do know, Coach Revola stepping down after this year, she's a Hall of Fame, uh, she's a member of the Hall of Fame at Shenandoah, she's a two-time state championship uh coach. Um, again, this year, incredible job, leading our team to the suburban council uh championship with a great group of girls, great group of seniors. Uh, and again, we were so proud to be able to have them get, get the opportunity, um, get the opportunity to play. It was an outstanding year and outstanding season, so come on up, uh, Coach Revola and the girls, come on up.
We just wanted to thank everybody for letting us play this season, and I know you all worked very hard to, to get us organized and uh to get us, to be able to get on the field, it was so important for the girls, and uh they did a great job, you know? It would have been nice to go to states again, but it was nice to, to win the suburban council championship and, and have a playoff at the end, so that was a great year, so.
Okay. Thank you so much. You asked it too. Put me on the spot. Um, I think we just want to thank you guys for letting us play and getting our senior season, and I meant a lot to us, just to give a final hurrah. So thank you, everybody. I'm just gonna second that, it was just, it was great to be able to play with my best friends one last time before we leave and guard for the West, so thank you.
That's good, I like that. Okay, next up, we have our uh boys soccer team. Once again, Coach Bane, no stranger to be in here. Um, you know, this continues to be a great fall program for us, and you know, I, I saw Coach Bane in the summertime, and he would say to me, geez, what, what's gonna happen with sectionals and states? And he would say to me, boy, I got, I got a great team this year, Chris, I got a, I got a great team. And I said, well, John, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna be able to play, you know, a lot of teams aren't playing soccer in the fall, we're gonna play soccer in the fall, you know, Dr. Robinson supporting it behind us. Um, team went out, won the suburban council championship. Um, and if you were ever on our Twitter site, there's a picture of Will Burdick, right? Will, I think, scoring the winning goal against CBA in the championship game. If you were at that championship game, it literally was like a sectional final. There was more badges, more people with badges than we actually gave out to, but uh they, they were all there, and it was played at a really high level, and there's a picture of Will kind of with his arms up after he scores the winning goal and the goalie for CBA on the ground. And I tweeted it out, and I said, if you don't think sports matters, all you have to do is look at this uh, look at this picture of these boys and how they, and how excited they were after they won it. So suburban council champions, Brandon and Owen are here with uh Coach Bane, come on up, boys. Congratulations.
Uh, first of all, thanks so much for having us tonight. You know, it's always an honor to be here and get recognized from the Board of Ed. And I'll echo, I'm sure, what you've heard uh so many times, and know all the things that you had to do uh to make the season happen. And from day one, we appreciated it. Um, we had a, you know, a little bit of a rough start to the season, we had a bunch of kids in quarantine, so I think that kind of set the, we had to right the ship, and I think everybody got on board and said, you know what, we're not gonna let this go. Um, and we always have a saying, like, you never know when your last game is gonna be. Truly, that was every single day. Um, we were going into the suburban council tournament, and the team we're supposed to play had a COVID case, and now the season's over. We were just fortunate, so we thank you so much for that. Um, and we didn't play for a state title, but you know, the year before, we lose in double overtime in the state semifinals, and to end on a win on our home field, um, was, was pretty awesome. So uh Randall Barrett, home regalia, this year's captain, did an outstanding job.
Thank you guys for making this all possible, and Bobby, behind the scenes, that made this season what it was. Uh, it meant a lot to all of us to just, on behalf of the whole team, just to go out, win the section, play together one last time, and recruiting wise as well, so thank you very much.
Good job, uh, congratulations.
Um, next up, I'll talk about a team that really kind of drew uh the, the short straw at the end of their season. Uh, girls soccer went through the season, um, had one opponent um that they wanted to play in the championship game, and I think the game was scheduled for Saturday morning at eleven o'clock, and Dr. Robinson and I started communicating around ten twenty-five in the morning, thirty-five minutes before the game, that he had received a phone call, and I had received a phone call that Shaker was gonna have issues with a couple of their players being quarantined. Um, what the decision was, was Shaker was going to go down and have to pull five of their athletes off the field and play the game down five athletes. They were also worried about the rest of the team having to wind up being in quarantine. I think five grew to eight, and then I spoke to Dr. Robinson, and we kind of made a decision that we couldn't play the game under these circumstances, and by league rules, um, you're entitled to forfeit. We had established kind of COVID protocols, if a team couldn't play, the other team would forfeit. Um, I spoke to Dr. Robinson, I spoke to Coach Nurse Burger, and uh, you know, we talked to the girls, and we decided that we would declare ourselves co-champions with Shaker. Um, it was incredibly sportsmanship move on the part of the girls to accept that and to understand that that overall in the game of life was the bigger thing to do than just to say, hey, we're gonna be, we're gonna take a forfeit so we can call ourselves champions because the game needs to be determined on the field. Again, they had an incredible, um, they had an incredible season, great, great group of girls, great coaches, so I want to bring up our co-champions from the suburban council, uh, girls soccer. Come on up, girls.
Hi, thank you for having us, Holly Nurse Burger. Um, I think we get the award for the most people here. Um, but the gratitude and appreciation we have for you in trusting our athletes and our coaching staff to pull this off safely in the fall, where other districts said, no, thank you. Um, the gratitude and appreciation runs deep to our leadership team, our Board of Education, and all the administrations here, administration team here. Um, I think the girls did a phenomenal job as well. Um, and the fact that on the field, our leadership team, um, that last game that Chris is speaking of, it was a true championship game. I remember, um, Gus, I hope you don't mind me mentioning this, but I remember Gus still walking by and saying the energy at the field was certainly palpable, and it was, we had tied them in season, um, they scored sixty-four goals, we scored sixty-three goals on the season. I mean, athlete to athlete, it was a true matchup, um, you know, part of the devastation piece, again, playing for a league championship. Um, the kids were fully invested, and that's thanks to you guys and trusting that we could pull that off this season. So, thank you all, thank you, Chris, thank you, Dr. Robinson. Um, it was a great fall, a really great fall, and uh the mental health piece, when kids are doing what they love, you know, we saw the smiles, we saw the energy, we felt the heart, and uh, again, thank you. Eva Caputo is our senior captain, I just want to say a few quick words.
I came from a softball game, so I kind of have that. Um, I think, I just want to say that on behalf of all of us, we're very grateful for the opportunity to play this well, and from-
And that's a lot in part to do to Chuck's leadership within the um, within the, you know, as our aquatics director, but also as our varsity boys swim coach. Um, they again had a great year, won the suburban council championship. Um, and again, without further ado, it's our boys swim team who kind of is here year after year, so come on up, boys. So first, I just want to take this opportunity, we didn't get an opportunity to come up here last year, and these guys and so many of our team were, were, were uh part of our, our successful program team last year. Uh, Mr. Coleman was there along with uh Ryan Fett and our assistant AD, and uh, we've had some great teams in our, in our history, but in terms of, of teams achieving their, their fullest potential, um, which is what we strive for every year. Um, I'll put that team up against any one of the teams we have, and I don't say that lightly. Um, so I wanted to start with that, and we were very fortunate to be able to get our full season in. We had our state championships in our banquet on Saturday and Sunday, and then by the next weekend, you know, everything was shut down, so we were very, very fortunate to be able to get that in last year. Um, this year was obviously like, like everybody else, I think the word that I would use to describe this year's team is really resiliency. Um, you know, not having the, the same kind of lead-up time that you normally have leading up to the season and not being able, you know, so many unknowns and so many uncontrollables. And one of the things that we preach and talk about all the time is you gotta focus on what you have control over and focus on what, what, what you can control, not worry about, and not spend any time stressing over things that you can't control. And there was an awful lot of things that we couldn't control this year, um, and it was certainly unique having uh the overwhelming majority of our season. Our, our meets, for those of you that don't know, were, were virtual meets, so what that meant was we swam at our pool, and Miss Una swam at their pool, and then maybe match up our times and we see who won. And as you can imagine, as a coach, um, the amount of stress that that caused, uh, not only for myself, but you know, it, it, you're, you're basically, it's like if you're able to play like Mario Kart, you're racing like a ghost at another pool. Uh, so uh, but our boys, you know, we, we throw out it all again, you know, you start the first day of practice, and there's, there's no sectionals, there's no states, and our meets are gonna be virtual, okay, let's go, you know? But um, but, but we talked about, you know, our model for the season was no excuses, and we weren't gonna use anything as an excuse, and we were gonna go out and do our best, and we got off to a great start with our divers, and then what had already been a, a very challenging season, very tragically, um, you know, the head coach from Burnt Hills passed away uh the morning of our, our championship meet, and that pushed us back an additional week. Um, and if you know anything about, about, you know, swimming, um, you know, you try to time everything literally down to the, to the day of and the minute of, and uh to throw an extra week in there was just an, another wrinkle on top of everything else, and then just truly awful circumstances. But our boys rose to the occasion and, 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 you know, they, they really tested that uh holding yourself uh accountable to yourself and not worrying about things that you can't control, and they rose to the occasion, and these guys did a phenomenal job leading us this year, this is Tom Fitzgerald and Chris Mace, they did a phenomenal job under extremely difficult situations of, of uh keeping us uh to the same standard that we always holding ourselves to, and not, not, not uh bringing it down at all. So I commend them for their leadership this year, and I, I thank everybody uh on the Board and Dr. Robinson and Mr. Coleman and everyone for allowing us just- and everyone for allowing us just the opportunity to compete. And, and it's certainly something that we didn't take for granted every single day that we were there all season. And that's something that we talked about a lot as well. So thank you for that opportunity and we're very thankful that there's a whole bunch of kids over in the pool right now getting ready for next season. So thank you all very much. The next two teams, uh, the next two teams have really, kind of really had, really, I think, in some ways have drawn the short end of the, the straw along with our spring athletes last year. Our boys and girls basketball teams last year had both won the sectional championships. Were both heading to the state final four. Would not have had to leave, would not have had to leave the, the section in order to try to compete for those championships. And then, um, you know, with everything that unfolded, those, those championship opportunities were lost. Fast forward to this year, basketball is termed a high-risk sport, we don't know if we're gonna play, we get the approval to play. Then Dr. Robinson calls me and says, we've got a little bit of an issue, Saratoga County DOH isn't ready to release us to playing yet, we have to wait for the number to get below 4%. You know, this sort of like roller coaster ride of emotions that everybody was on. We were able to get back into the gym, we were able to participate. And our boys basketball team went undefeated through the season and was able to capture the suburban council championship. And I'm really proud of them, the way they, they stuck it out, this has been a great group. Just like Coach Revola, Coach Zeikis is stepping down, as many of you are aware, Coach Yachtal has been named as his successor. But it's a great opportunity to bring Tony in to thank him for all his efforts and everything that he's done for the boys basketball program publicly. He knows, uh, you know, him and I have had a great relationship over the time that we've been able to work together. His leadership and guidance and at the end of the day, it's the boys that he cares about and their success on and off the court, which has made Shen basketball what it is. And his son Devin and Luke are here as testaments to that, so I'd like to bring up our suburban council championship boys basketball program. Come on.
You know, it's, uh, it's really been an emotional year, I was just, I teach fifth grade at the Sago, as some of you guys know. And every year just goes by lightning fast, I love being in the classroom. And I was just saying, man, it seems like forever ago that it was September, getting adjusted to everything. The stuff we've had to learn and I knew, uh, you know, obviously as Chris said, my son Devin is gonna play for me. I knew it was gonna be my last year as a coach. And there were so many adjustments, so many modifications. And in a year that's already gonna be filled with adjustments for me personally. So it's kind of emotional, uh, even to get up here, this is the first time really publicly spoke, uh, to a group and to see people who were so supportive of me and Dr. Robinson, Chris Coleman. And I just have been so blessed to do this for 16 years. It's, it, it, you know, if I lived to be 100, it'll be one of the things I look back on and say, I'm so proud of what I'm part of here in Shenandoah. And for this to be my last year, I don't think I could really script it up any better. I mean, if you take, you know, if you take away the little pandemic thing, maybe it'll look better. But even with that, I'll be really honest with you, we'll remember it forever. So yes, we didn't have a section. Yes, last year during the regional, we had 10 guys back from that team. We didn't get to play in that regional final, which I'm sure these two gentlemen, Luke and Devin, were super disappointed. They deserved more than anybody to be there and play in it, but we didn't get to do that. This year, there was no section, no regional, no chance for a state title. But we'll never forget this, ever. And I am so proud of the young men in this school, including my son. He was just part of a great kid, we had 18ers this year. And they, they just handle themselves with such maturity. Uh, and they, they didn't win every game, they ran through the league. I think we had two single-digit games. And the, this thing that was special about them, the feedback I got about this team was how well they played together and how credible they were at passing the ball. And from a coaching standpoint, I don't think I could be any more proud than I am to stand here and say that was the last team I'm gonna coach and my son was part of it. And I'll be honest with you, when I, when I, I knew it was time, because I know Devin's playing at Self University next year and I would want to go see him play. But after you made that decision, boy, you, you, you sit down, you're ready and I can kind of go, I do the right thing, but, I, you know, I know in my heart, it, it was time. You know, but, uh, you know, I really appreciate 16 years, I appreciate you guys for making this special for me. Lobbery, Devin's our cast this year and our teammates. I appreciate Dr. Robinson for all your support, the memories we'll have, state championship game, who get teed up. Chris Coleman, who would have me in the office, you know, I can be an emotional guy. And I'll never, ever, ever forget the amount of time that Chris spent with me. You know, just being a mentor, which is so important. As an athletic director, it's so needed and he was always there for me. So, um, you know, thank, thank you for this year's team, they represent the school the way you do as always. And thank you guys for the last 16 years, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Just under our final, just under our final couple of teams here and as bad as the boys had it, this girls basketball team may have had it even worse. This team really, I think in many ways, could have been a generational team for us. In, in that it's a team that comes along only, you know, so often. And they didn't have the opportunity to have that experience of going to regionals or states this year. Basically had everybody back this year. I think their, you know, I was talking to Joe, their average margin of victory was like 30 points or something along those lines. Coach Murphy couldn't be here with us, I think he had kind of a family emergency. But he did send his seniors in to represent us, so I think Megan's gonna do the talking here, so. Come on up, our suburban council championship girls basketball team.
My boys are that good, so actually, you know. But I think like this season was a lot different for us, especially with the 15 games and kind of like having everything be modified with Powell. We can kind of like be together as a team, even with the coaches, like everything was just in moderation of what we had to do, what we could do. But we made the most out of it, we really appreciate everything that we were given, like Dr. Robinson, Mr. Coleman and our coaches. We appreciate everything that we got. And it really would, would have been so different if we didn't have leaders like you guys to kind of like push us through this, these times and this past year and we just appreciate it a lot, we couldn't have done without you guys.
Just wanted to say thank you to everyone who came together to help us have a season, just under the circumstances, so thank you again.
And they did have, uh, they did have the cutouts there and we had, uh, we had Riley's brother who would make an appearance and Megan's grandmother was on, right, you know? So we did have the cutout there. I saved this team for last. Um, I saved this team for last because I think it's a true testament to what this Board of Education and what our superintendent is all about. When we were, when we were looking at sports we could play, Dr. Robinson called me and I said, geez, how did the suburban council meeting go? And his comment to me was, I think we got everybody to where we need, but we're still, they're still worried about wrestling. And so I went back to Coach Weeks and I said, you know, geez, we gotta keep fighting this fight, we gotta keep advocating, we gotta keep showing people that we can do this. And, you know, we just came back to this idea that we were gonna wrestle with masks on. And we had a wrestling team that probably was one of the best teams in school history and one of the best teams in the state. And didn't get the opportunity to compete for a state championship, a sectional championship. And they didn't even get the opportunity to compete for a suburban council championship because they just wrestled duels every night. So a lot was taken away from them. And I look over here and I see somebody like Brock who, uh, you know, finished second on the podium last year at states. And, you know, he would have been number one in his weight class for that unique experience of being a state championship wrestler and not having that opportunity. But you know what, he came to practice, loved his teammates, his quotes in the paper are all about being around the team. Our motto in our department is team first. You know, just highlighting him, he exemplifies that as a leader within this program. So I could not be more proud of our wrestlers and the efforts of Coach Weeks this year and all the coaches and the athletes in the program. So I do want to bring up the wrestlers and they'll be your bodyguards if you need to leave here tonight, so come on up, boys. Come on up, Brock.
First of all, I'd like to thank everybody, Dr. Robinson, Mr. Coleman. It's hard to put into words the amount of work that goes into a process to get a sport like wrestling started off the ground. Mr. Coleman and I had a conversation during a soccer game and he said, how are we gonna do this? And on the inside, I'm like, we're not, it's not gonna happen, there's no way. And, and I'm a wrestling guy, you know, I've lived this sport my entire life. I could not put two and two together and fathom having a wrestling season this year. And until about a week before, I was telling these guys, be ready for the season, but I was telling myself, be ready for not having a season. I've been fortunate to coach wrestling here since 1997 and I can honestly say this is probably the best team I've ever had. Not just for the type of kids we have, but the team that we had. We were proud, we were likely a contender for a state title as a team this season. We had two or three kids in the lineup that were destined to be state champions individually. We had a league record going for consecutive wins that we forfeited. And I was more than willing to concede all of that for the opportunity to invite 37 kids into the room every day during the pandemic and prove that, yeah, a sport like wrestling can happen. And we did it and knock on wood, we did it without any issue whatsoever. And it was, it was a tremendously enjoyable experience for me as a coach. It was almost a little relieving, you know, we're a pretty, fairly competitive program. We've had some success in the past. We kind of put all that stuff on the back burner and just focused on the individuals. We had the opportunity to get some guys more than one match in a night during a duel meet, which you could never do during a normal year, so. We were fortunate in that area. We're fortunate to have a superintendent who's so supportive of the program, an athletic director who goes above and beyond to get things started. And, and the long story is that Mr. Coleman and a couple other athletic directors are the reason why we had a season. They could have easily said, you know, Dr. Robinson, I don't think we can do that, and it would have been over. If it weren't for the support of the Board of Ed, for the superintendent and for Mr. Coleman, we would have lost the opportunity to have one more chance to step on the mat for these guys. And for some of them, it's a lifetime commitment. Brock Dalsig Norris probably wrestled since he was five, six, seven. I was his first coach when he was seven years old and to have the opportunity to finish off with him is, is a blessing for me. Seamus, uh, we had kind of a pseudo banquet at the end of the year and, and Seamus, who's, he's a man of few words. But when he spoke at the banquet, it was heartfelt and it truly showed why we needed to have a season this year. And Colton, who's not a man of few words, actually had one of the most impressive speeches I've heard in a long time, so. They all kind of hit it out of the park for me as to why we had the season. And we wouldn't have without your support, so we as a program want to thank you for the season. We do not want to say anything.
And I'm telling you, if you have trouble getting to your car tonight, you just need, you know, Seamus and Brock and Colton will help you get there. Dr. Robinson, just real quickly, just to summarize, I just again want to thank you for all your support this year. Mrs. Stevenson, all the board members, I cannot thank you enough for your support. We were able to do this, we've got teams that are still participating in sectional championships. I will tell you this, Robbie, Chuck, Tony and Joe and all the coaches that were here tonight, they got an email from me, you know, last night and talked about, you know, being transformative leaders and focusing on the experience and moving forward and reconnecting with our kids. And in that message, you know, we're looking forward to student sections, large crowds, homecomings, youth nights, six-man games. You know, once we get the word that we can do those things and we can do them safely, we're looking forward to doing it because we realized this year that sports is really important in the fabric of this district for a lot of these kids. And not just for kids that participate, for kids being able to come to games and socialize and do all those things. So we're looking forward to the next week with our lacrosse teams and softball and baseball and track and field. So again, bottom of my heart, I thank you, I apologize that it went on long tonight, but we haven't been here in a year and a half, so.
Thank you very much, Mr. Coleman, and as we prepare to continue with our presentation, um, so Mrs. Carmen, come forth with the, the folks with the, the social emotional learning. And this, this, when you think about what you just witnessed, that's a perfect example of when we're talking about social emotional learning and experiences of schools, what it does for young people. So we're gonna have a presentation, but before we do so, I want to do one thing. So Mrs. Carmen's here. So the, as, as people know, we have a, like you mentioned in this story, we have a, a very thriving backpack program here at Shen. And this program is successful because of volunteers, because people donate money and time. And we have our super volunteer, Beth Miles, who's a parent in the district who has really, really just taken on this program and run it. And she's always saying, we should look for grant opportunities, we should look for grant opportunities. And the foundation, the Shen Foundation stepped up to the plate and said, well, we'll be the, the foundation that can provide, as a school district. And so the foundation stepped up to the plate, as a result, applied for the grant funding donors. So we have $10,000 to now to ensure that food insecurity is not an issue for our young people. And, and I want to kind of point out that as the bridge between this and the next presentation because everything speaks to what we're trying to do as a system to support our young people in all dimensions. We talk about the importance of sports, now we talk about the importance of nutrition. To give them that, not only that healthy nutrition, but peace of mind knowing that, that they're people who care about them and their well-being and their future. So, so on behalf of the entire administration, I want to say, Beth, thank you, Beth Miles, if you're listening. Thank you very much for being a champion for this program and, and, and you have a, a hundred-year contract. Maybe you can pay more zeros for that. And, and the board, I think the board support, even though the board is not directly related to this, but the environment that the board creates, that they give people that sense of empowerment to go out and do these things becomes important. So Mrs. Stevenson is also the current interim Shen Foundation Board President. I want to say also thanks to Shen Foundation for stepping up to the plate and saying, use us to have great opportunities. So, and thank you very much, and Mrs. Carmen, your assistance, thank you very much for all those people out. And lastly, I would be remiss if I said, the Special Education Department and all those young people who go out there to Shen, pack those bags and get them ready, kudos, thank you, thank you, thank you. So we're looking forward to great things, next year's result of great donations, lucky dollars, thank you. We can't, we couldn't do without you, we appreciate your support, so thank you.
All right. So good evening, thank you very much for having us here tonight. We have a group of us who have been working endlessly on social emotional learning and implementing social emotional learning into our culture here at Shenandoah and really working to try to make it the fabric of what we do every day. Coming together as a school, you can turn it, oh, okay, great. Well, wrong one, apologize. I'm not used to that, you always click, so I was ready to give you the signal. Thank you. So coming together as a school community is a critical component of the success of a social emotional learning program. And our, an SEL program cannot succeed without the school-wide support, the Board of Education's support, our administrators, our staff and our students. And that is why it has been and continues to be a difficult in the district. More than two decades of research demonstrates that education promoting social and emotional learning gets the results. This slide you probably have seen before several different times, the profile of an engaged classroom. Deep learning occurs through social interaction in a classroom community. A community is based on developing those meaningful relationships between teachers and students. These relationships are based on respect and validation. When all of our students' unique characteristics are acknowledged and respected, our K-12 SEL initiative is grounded in these ideas that are here in a profile of an engaged classroom. Social emotional learning is an integral part of a student's education. SEL advances equity, educational equity and excellence through authentic school, family, community partnerships to establish learning environments and experiences that feature trusting and collaborative relationships. trusting and collaborative relationships, rigorous and meaningful curriculum and instruction, and ongoing evaluation. Social emotional learning can help address various forms of equity, excuse me, of inequity, and empower young people and adults to co-create thriving schools and contribute to a safe, healthy, and just communities. The five competencies that you see here in the diagram in the center of the circle, the green, yellow, and orange, are the ones in which we are using as a K-12 system here at Shenandoah, hoping, hoping to create a common vocabulary that we're using moving forward. We're going to hear a little bit tonight about what is happening at the various levels here at Shenandoah. We're going to talk about what's happening at each level and then where we're going for next year. And so I'm going to introduce Asma Simohamid, the Assistant Principal. Come on up, Asma. Asma is our school counselor at Shattuck.
So Mrs. Carmen has said that I am very soft spoken, which is true. So I will try my best to project my voice tonight. But good evening. I am Asma Simohamid. And this past year, I have been extremely fortunate, fortunate to join the Shen team in Shattuck Elementary School, grateful for my principal and dear Ms. Erica Ryan. So thank you again for hearing us tonight about this important topic. In the past couple of years, we have learned a lot. It has been challenging, but we have definitely learned a lot, especially about the importance of emotional, social well-being in children and its effect on how they learn and succeed in the classroom. I'd like you to indulge me for a minute. I want to take you through a quick journey. I want you to imagine yourself as a child. This can be yourself, this can be your own children, maybe a child out in the community. It could be one of the athletes we saw tonight. Think about this child preparing, preparing for their next day to go to school. What does their evening look like? What kind of dinner are they having? Are they sitting as a family? As they progress through their evening, how are they greeted at bedtime? How are they wish a good night? Is someone there? Or are they put to sleep alone? Do they have the brain and education capacity to understand their brain, to understand their coping skills? Or do they have healthy coping skills? Or do they use video games as an escape? Are they able to go through the night? And how do they wake up in the morning? I want you to think about whether these children have positive interactions out in their home and in the community, or if they're inundated with negative words. How do they believe in themselves? Now I want you to sit for a second with this child that you have in your mind and realize that the child that you are thinking of is different than the child who your neighbor is thinking of. The children that walk through our doors, keep in mind, are all different. Some of them are able to walk through the door, ready to learn, with their brain, their upstairs brain, all prepared to sit at their desk and complete their morning work with no issue. However, that's not true for everyone. Other children come to us stressed, angry, frustrated, completely dysregulated, with their downstairs brain needing help. I want you to now imagine the brain of these children and their inability to access the thinking part. This is where our work is so important. It's important for us to make sure that we are there to regulate these children, to give them the opportunity to nourish them if they need food. If they've had a night where they didn't eat or a morning where they didn't have breakfast. We're there to provide those meaningful relationships to grow these children and to access their upstairs brain. So prior to walking through these doors for myself, I had to ensure that I slept well, had nutritious meal throughout the day, kept myself hydrated, and made sure that I took deep, long breaths to manage my anxious feelings of coming here before you. You might ask why? If I'm not able to do that, then I'm not able to sit in front of you or stand in front of you and tell you about the critical work and the importance of the work we do as counselors here at Shen School. This past year, elementary, at the elementary schools, we've taken the necessary steps to bring awareness to our building about the effects of a dysregulated child on learning. This has been proven through science again and again. As well as receiving professional development this past summer to ensure that we deliver our Second Step curriculum to all of our students at the elementary level. We were able to teach students different units from the curriculum at a tier-one level, including skills for learning, empathy, which also encompass bully prevention and kindness initiative, emotion management, and problem solving. These lessons were delivered in a variety of ways, through counselors and teachers working collaboratively at all elementary schools, depending on their unique needs. Collectively throughout the year, we also continued to support teachers through presentations about wellness and understanding, just like we need to care for our children, we must care for ourselves as well. This was done during faculty meetings. Other building activities such as support groups and book studies were also done, as well as sharing important information through the SEL site, our quarterly newsletters, and principal newsletters to our parents. Dr. Robinson earlier mentioned that we are a system. We are a very important system to moving our children forward and providing them with opportunities to succeed, to breaking the cycle of poverty and racism. Moving forward as a system, our next steps would be to increase the capacity of teachers in the classroom and empowering families at home. Our goal is to implement Second Step curriculum with integrity in all grades K through five at all of our elementary schools by the end of 2022, 2023 school year. Through professional development for teachers and adult programs for families, as well as assessing students, our hope is to have adults answer the two most important questions, the why and the how. The why behind every child's behavior and the how, how we can help. We all have the same hopes and dreams for our children, whether it's families, parents, the community, teachers, and educators. And it's for our children to succeed. So thank you so much for allowing me to come here tonight. Thank you, Mrs. Carmen. Thank you for the board for electing me, and I appreciate being part of this amazing community. I'm also the proud parent of a fourth and a fifth grader at Otte Elementary School. So thank you very much. I'd like to hold over to Stacy so that she can talk about the middle school initiatives and next step. Thank you.
Thank you, Asma. That was great. My name is Stacy Badney. I'm the Assistant Principal at Coda Middle School. During the first quarter, as we started this unique school year, we knew there was a host of challenges. But first and foremost, we know there's an opportunity every day to have a positive impact on the child. And kind of keeping that perspective when we're feeling tired and down and out, but knowing that you have that opportunity is what drove a lot of us to smile every day and to work collaboratively, not only in Coda, but as a tri-building to support our students that were onsite and who are completely virtual, and their families. One thing that we wanted to do, because there were so many great things being done and still being done, is try to streamline all that is being done. And one of the things that we felt would be critical in order for us to identify what our Shen students needed and what they wanted to learn about was to survey our students. So in the fall, we surveyed them, and many had shared out with us that they're not quite sure if they do have a social emotional skill set, which is typical of most middle schoolers at this age. Because they yet have to have more experience socializing and they're navigating more independently with relationships and such, so completely normal. Another thing that they shared out is that they want to learn more about stress management, time management, goal setting, and having more positive relationships with folks. So I thought that was very revealing and nice to see. And based on those outcomes, Linda Coy, the school counselor at Kewana, had created a lot of great online resources, and we borrowed some from the elementary and some from the high school, knowing that this was probably going to be the main platform and then allow all our students, the school community, community members to have access to this, especially our virtual students, and try to keep that sense of community belonging with the school. So she had done many links on the calming room. She created a monthly newsletter that would take the themes from our student survey and allow the teachers to have conversations in the classroom. In the English department, some teachers did journal entries for students to be reflective and look at things and then have a discussion with the virtual and the onsite students as they did their synchronous lessons. But most important too was just the opportunity for the kids to have an opportunity to talk about things and hear other students share their experiences and realize they're not alone, especially the students who are home completely virtual. It was very beneficial. The tri-building SEL committee was formed this year. We have nineteen members, which is a good cross-section of all the grade levels, from school counselors to reading teachers and such. So that's been a great team as we begin to discuss the how and why, increasing awareness in all three buildings, and then looking at each building's unique challenges and needs and how we can go about addressing that in the most effective, efficient manner and such. So as we look into next year, we're looking to sustain and keep ability evolving our SEL program. As I mentioned, we're looking to streamline more. One of the things that we took a great look at was Second Step and Castle, and the committee decided on Second Step because it's research-based. It lines with the New York State Education Department benchmarks in social emotional learning. And also, the elementary is doing it, and they've shown a good faith effort trying to implement it and have it fully integrated throughout all grade levels next year or in the following year. So we feel like it'd be a good continuum of themes and common language, knowing that students are coming from elementary into the middle school. And as we discuss these things, we'll have a good command of the vocabulary, the topics and such already. Another thing was to continue our surveys and monitor our students' progress as we go through the different programs and resources we're sending out and getting feedback from students and faculty. Do you feel it's working? What can we do better? What, you know? So that's going to be really critical, this survey. So we're looking to develop a lot of those over the summer with our PD, summer curriculum, just so that we can get more feedback from our students. It's okay to assume, but I think hearing from our students, giving them voice and showing that we're taking action on it will definitely build more confidence in that. And then to, again, hopefully with Second Step, we can get that implemented and begin that process of sharing that out with all middle school faculty and staff and monitors about what it is, what the intent is, and how we're going to go about implementing it. And what's nice about Second Step is it's a very fluid program. They do have lessons, very clear-cut lessons and ways to monitor your students, but it's very fluid. And what I like about the surveys and what we're trying to do is we're trying to make it for our students, make it relevant and meaningful for our Shen students. So that would be very exciting to do. So thank you very much. And I'd like to introduce Mrs. Lisa Kissinger.
Good evening. You know me as the social studies academic administrator, but tonight I'm going to represent a team of people I'm very proud to have worked with this year on the development of our social emotional learning program for the high school level. We designed a program at the high school to address the needs of the high school community with content that we wrote and developed ourselves for both students and adults. We built an awareness campaign, providing opportunities for professional development for teachers on virtual Wednesdays. We created a video to promote SEL to faculty and staff, which featured high school teachers who talked about the value of SEL in their classrooms and strategies that they used by that point in the school year. We even offered a virtual stretching class via Google Meet on a Wednesday in March. Who doesn't need a stretching class, right? At your desk in March. For students, check-in questions were developed and distributed in the fall. Teachers were encouraged to use these questions based on the five SEL competencies that you heard Becky talk about at the beginning, or the middle, or the end of their lessons, wherever they fit in organically into the instruction. We built a second video featuring high school teachers again, who talked about resilience in their personal lives. And we developed a lesson on resilience and one on goal setting that we disseminated out to teachers at critical times in the school year. In other words, the end of quarter one and quarter two. These lessons were taught in social studies and English classes. Wellness messages were sent out to students weekly and were also reinforced at critical times in the school year. For example, just prior to our December break, Ron Augustineoni recorded a message specifically to students about managing the time they had during December break. Our awareness and wellness efforts were also extended to parents this year as we developed and delivered two webinars. The first providing a general overview of SEL, and the second was strategies to manage stress and anxiety. The next slide shows you the goals that we have for next year include expanding our core SEL team to include more teachers, building on our success this year by developing lessons for monthly themes for September and June based on the themes that we'll identify with the middle school committee that come from the Second Step program, and continuing to support the wellness of all of the members of our high school community. So I'll turn it over to Becky now, who will close out the presentation.
So you see the roadmap in, in front of you here, and we think about, again, why social emotional learning? Why is this important? What is, what is this going to do for our students, for our staff, for our community as a whole? And again, if you look at the various signs, we're, we're on, we're on a journey. We're going to continue this journey. And as we go through this, we hope to start seeing some improvements in areas. And there's research out there that shows typically you could see an increase in about 11%, if not more, in academic performance with the implementation of social emotional learning. You see a decrease in behavior. You see an increase in attendance. You see more people able to manage those stressors. So we have various different benefits of social emotional learning on the road signs here. So as we continue our work and as we continue on that journey, we will hope to have a continued impact on staff and students and our community as a whole. And before I wrap up, I really just need to say thank you very much to Dr. Wood and Dr. Robinson, as well as the Board of Education for supporting this work and the implementation of this. And really, this group right here during COVID and the heart of COVID and many late-night conversations with Lisa Kissinger about what are we going to do and how can we do this? And who are the people we need to pull on? So I couldn't have done it without you guys two working on this. So it's really a team effort. Thank you. Any comments? It's timely. It's encouraging to see all the work that's going in because we know that there's more ahead because of this pandemic that we're in. But this is, this gives me hope.
Awareness piece also, you know, teaching, teaching, you know, your own self-awareness is so important. And the earlier that we can do that and that our kids can be aware of how they're feeling and what they're experiencing will only be better for them personally.
Great summary. You're communicating a lot deeper than I thought you would be. This had to potentially be sort of a buzzword acronym kind of thing. You went a lot deeper because you're presenting some substantial content, you're doing surveys. I think a lot of things that we've accomplished over the years starts with a survey. We have to be careful that we don't get too fixated on. We have to be careful that we don't get too fixated on, but the survey gets you thinking and establishing a lot of inquiry. And so definitely, you know, we see what I thought would be coming out of this survey very much.
And I love that you're surveying the middle school kid and that you're surveying them and then re-surveying, right? Because things change so, they're so, these are so fluid that, you know, their experience has changed so rapidly. So it's so good. Well, thanks.
Oh, I just wanna add, once of the survey, the other metrics that you had mentioned, you know, tardiness, um, you know, being in school, their grades going, you have other things that you can also track to see um whether this is working. And that's the, it sounds like you've had your eyes on the right things.
Yeah, no, I just wanted to say, um, look, my, my spouse is a school counselor, so I'm familiar with the language, right? Um, but this multifaceted approach is just really great to hear, the detail and just how many different ways you're approaching faculty. And I want to thank you for that visualization exercise, too. I think just thinking about and trying to walk through everyone else's shoes and what's seen, well, what's unseen that people bring into to our hallways is just so important. So I, I thank you guys, all of you, for the work.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So, um, so thank you, Mr. Stevenson, and the board for for that indulgence. Um, tonight, we knew it was gonna be a great night, um, and so we told people to make sure they ate their weeds, recorded cane. Um, and I forgot to follow that same routine myself. So um, I'm going to to shift gears a little bit, but everything's gonna come full circle. Um, you see the second, the things that we've been talking about tonight. But before it goes, I just wanna just offer some initial comments that I delayed from from the beginning. Um, Mrs. Stevenson mentioned that this past week, you know, it's, it's, it's been, I call it a week of blur, right? We went from mask to no mask to mask to mask depending on where you are. Um, and 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 within that, um, it's a, it's a test of of our sense of resolve because with that, and Mrs. Stevenson knows, she and I was texting quite a bit over the weekend. Um, with that, we get people who have so many different opinions on on what we should do. And while those opinions are are important, we make decisions based upon objective information, facts and factors. And I share that with you because sometimes people get frustrated because they want what they want and when they don't get it, they think then you're the bad guy. And I just wanna share one conversation I have with a parent who, who, you know, guess wasn't as kind. And I said to him, like, do you even know me? Have we ever even met? And he was like, no. I was like, so how can you have such hate towards me? We've never even met each other. And he was like, you know, this is good for me. And I share that with you because I think sometimes we have to remind people that what we're in this for is what you saw tonight. What you heard from the, the mouth of the babes, the young people, the coaches, the, the, the folks who are here talking about social-emotional learning. And I have to, I, I think I just wanna pause to remind the public that, that we get up every day to try to figure out how do we best provide the best opportunities for our kids to consider all the various factors, known, unknown, and many that we don't control, but yet we try within this environment. And that's our focus. And so, so, so I, I, that piece was so profound, I was like, you don't even know me. How can you hate me when you don't even know me? And I think sometimes we have to get to that point with people to say, let's get to know each other before we start being so harsh and critical about each other. And so, 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 so all the things tonight was so fitted when we think about where we are with the state. And I have here the, the new guidance that's reset the old guidance. And so, so in fact, they have references of wrong years in it. So sometimes somebody has to look at the guidance, I'm not saying who, uh, Mr., um, anyway. So, 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 but those are the kind of things I wanna share with people that, that we are trying to get information, put it together, and keeping in mind what's in the best interest of the kids that we serve. Not for me, not only here at Shen, but kids across the state. And quite frankly, even nationally, in some of the conversations we're having, how we can have our best practice, influence the best practices across the state and country as well. So that's one thing I wanted to talk about. Um, and certainly there is a lot of excitement about what the future holds, um, you know, in terms of where COVID is going, where vaccination is going. So we still pushing it on rope while kids getting vaccinated, students getting vaccinated, doing those things because we know that the better those things become, the more we can do. And and so we're looking forward to those things as we move forward as well. And to tie it to to the, the, the presentation that I'm gonna share tonight, um, and there's a lot of details, I wanted to get all the details. But with that, some funding opportunities that that came out of the, the federal government um this past um year to try to help bridge the gap between the, the COVID to what we've been calling putting COVID in the rearview mirror um sequence of things. And so, so tonight, I'm just gonna talk about some strategic things that, that, that we're trying to do with some of the COVID funds. Um, and as you see here on this graphic, um, there's two major sources of COVID um related revenues that, that we're working on right now. It is alphabet super revenue. So we're gonna call one CRESSA and one called ARPA. So CRESSA is the, is our, that's your, ARPA is our son. Sound like a boy and girl name, I don't know. Maybe it's, um, who knows, right? So, so I'm gonna put that conversation purposes, CRESSA and ARPA. CRESSA has, um, was actually approved back in twenty twenty. So to give the board some context, remember we were doing a budget with some other funding clip? So at one point, the state was planning to use the CRESSA funds to backfill for state aid. And the Fed said, no, no, that wasn't intent. The intent was to have this been supplementary fund. So the state recalibrated their budget process and so the funds were still out there now for us to use um as a system. And like most times, you hear about the funds and the timeline, short timeline. So the timeline for us to put all this stuff together for a three-year span of about nine million dollars is by June fifteenth. So obviously, that's not a good timeline. Um, so we actually just heard last night, I got an email back from SCD, that we have now an extension to go to July fifteenth. So we bought ourselves, you know, another twenty days, depends on who's looking, right? Um, but we're looking at trying to put those funds together to address a lot of things and you'll see some of the things for a second. The second funding piece is the, the ARPA American Rescue Plan. This is the last, the last one where, where this one requires more public conversation, more public presentation, subsequent to why we haven't did this, this presentation um tonight as well. And and that's about um three point nine million dollars. So the two, two different funding, two different set of plans, two different set of submission, and they kind of run simultaneously in some sense. Oh, by the way, um, um, CRESSA is, goes until twenty twenty-three, so it's multi-year. Um, ARPA goes until twenty twenty-four, so multi-year, so it's a multi-year progression of spending um the funds over the course of time. And for some context, people say, wow, that sounded like a lot of money. We have some locals who this, we've got thirty, forty, fifty million dollars. So I'm grateful for what we have, but we have to keep it in context um as well as we move forward. Um, so again, to, to this definition piece, I won't necessarily um go to in too much detail about things important. The big piece with the ARPA piece is a clause that speaks about learning loss. And and we have actually deliberately tried to avoid that term because when you look at things from a deficit model, you approach things for the lowest common denominator versus the highest common denominator. So we've been talking about how do we create bridges to ensure that kids can build on their successes and not necessarily perseverating on the, they have a, a felt respect of the importance of having a chance to play the game. It's a whole different mindset than one of, what is me versus why are we so appreciative of playing the game? So we're taking that mindset as we move forward with the, with these funding opportunities. So the ARPA piece requires us to, to allocate X amount of dollars towards memory loss, about five hundred and twenty, five hundred and twenty thousand over the course of the next four years, depends on how you're looking at it. There are very specific things that the, the federal legislation has that we have to address, pretty wide open though. Um, and again, it's a larger list of things from safety returning to school to support early childhood education and everything else between. So just kind of give you a lesson of, of the wide variety of, of things that, that we're going to try to come up with um to, to use these funds effectively over the course of the next couple of years, couple of few years here as well. Just wanna point out this piece, again, I'm gonna shift to the ARPA one because the ARPA one is the one that has more of the pieces that we have to put on our website and have some feedback on it for the public and those type of things as we move forward. So ARPA, we have to come up with this plan before July first. So CRESSA was supposed to do fifteen, but we got extension till um July fifteenth. Everyone on the street is saying that more than likely, they're gonna have to create some other mechanism. Because when you think about what's happening right now? Right now, the timing here is a madly timed year regardless. And then you're gonna have all these major things on top of it and say, you have to come up with three-year plans with so many concerns. You have no idea what, what actual, what the regulations will be. That's why I was so excited when this came out, thought, oh my God, we have an answer. Then you realize, oh, it's the same answer from last September. Um, so, so, so for us to build something, not have those major details is a huge issue. So, so, so we anticipate that, that this is gonna come up for a process to extend this as well because the last thing we wanna do is spend money because we're squeezed by time now versus give us the opportunity to, to be very much, very diligent in terms of planning and leveraging those resources over a number of years. So the big piece I wanna talk about this is that some of it prioritizes spending on non-recurring costs. In other words, when the funding dried up, you don't wanna have holding on to a bunch of staff and things that, oh my God, what are we gonna do now? That we don't have a federal funds on those type of things. So, so focus on, on non-recurring costs and big pieces of it. And also, as you see here, is to talk about what are some of those things that you really wanna continue that you need to build into your local budget sequence as well? So, so we think about those things that we know as we plan forward and as the board know, we, we have multi-year plans anyway. So as we looking out for twenty-two, twenty-three, we're thinking, okay, if we start doing this, we could build that into the budget sequence two years from now and have that exit ramp, right? In terms of the federal funds dry up on this lane, we can exit and go to that lane or certain things we just simply get off the highway because we have already exhausted those funds and, and that, that particular purchase is going to, to live on beyond that period of time, such as equipment, things of that nature, that you don't have to keep spending money on over and over. So, so just wanted to emphasize that piece of it as well. And so, so, so this process has been um certainly for, for, for core group of us, very reflective process. Um, in fact, I, I brought in the group the other day and I said, this is my test to see how well I know the system. Because I put all this stuff here, it's like, if you come into this room, the group of folks, and you guys have a whole bunch of, of, of ideas, that mean I don't know our system very well. So, so part of my test is how much of what I put on paper, you say, yep, that's what I was thinking too. Yep, that's what I was thinking too. So personally, I, I use it as a way for me to reflect on how well I understand the nuances of our system as we move forward and then have people come in with confirmation in greater details. So SEL, for example. I knew that we have a lot of folks gonna go a lot deeper, as Mr. President said, on SEL. So I'm not, I know SEL is a major piece, but now I know that we have a comprehensive plan to address SEL as an example, which you see on the screen as we move forward. So, so Ben.
So, so on previous presentation, you know, there may be textbooks on SEL.
So, so I'm gonna get into that.
Okay.
So you're trying, you're trying to read ahead, I know that, Mr. President. It must be that, it's that other, other military academy in education. Um, so, so, so it's okay. Yes, so we will be absolutely getting into that, absolutely, absolutely. So, so, so one of the things that we wanted to step back and say, what did we actually learn from this COVID period? What are lessons learned? Let's reflect on it. And, 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 and for those things that they have fundamental change, what we do in the positive way, how do we build on those things? For those things that, that point out glaring gaps, how do we make sure that we bridge those gaps moving forward? So there was a reflective piece on it. So, so we started talking about, you know, from the content perspective, we, we, we spent a lot of time talking about prioritizing curriculum. Dr. Wood and academic administrators, talking about one of the things that we want kids to, to know, understand and achieve. So how do we build on those things moving forward? Um, one of the gradient practices, authentic learning experiences that, that we spoke about here, and what's the intelligence is that, again, some of the stuff you heard with the, the SCL, SEL presented, presentation. So I'm not what it's, what we ever go, you see that, but even now to, to, to some of the safety things that, that we have put in place that COVID or not, we should continue doing certain, taking, doing certain protocols, safety protocols, screening protocols. All those things then, how do we move those things forward? So, so this started from a very reflective place. So to, to, to see where we are and know where we ought to be and then trying to figure out what are the things that we need to do to bridge the gap to get to that point somewhere in the future. And so, so, so it's a very reflective process um for us as a system. And this particular slide kind of puts it in perspective that at the end of the day, here's what we wanna do, these three things. We wanna accelerate the learning experience for kids. So, so, so that's the bridge and the gap piece of it. So we don't want to perseverate on what kids didn't learn. We want to say, we wanna focus on what we need to accelerate so they can stay on track and pace to, to move forward. So, so the academic offering, the, the expansion of summer school offering, after-school offering, investment in curriculum materials. So that's kind of the big rocks, right? When it comes to accelerating learning experience. We wanna have safe and welcoming environments for school. It is like common sense, right? What could happen, that yes, we want kids to be in a situation that we can accelerate their learning. Yes, we want kids to be in safe learning environments. And yes, we wanna maximize operational efficiencies. All sounds logical. Now we're on patterned details. One of those things that we need to do to focus on and use in this tremendous opportunity with these resources to really position us for continued prosperity moving forward. So, so that's kind of like the, the mental model, if you will, to start with a larger framing and then we start building in the, the, the sequence of things. And so some of this will come, come to a head for you in a second as we move forward. So the, the, so the, the federal funds had certain categories. So one category was safety returning to students in person. And, and with that was maximizing in-person instruction. So, so with that, again, um, not everything here, just some ideas, some areas that we're gonna focus on. We anticipate, based upon even this guidance document, that we still would have to have some virtual capacity for um students. So how do we do that with the focus on maximizing in-person? So, so what is, what are some potential additional staffing that, okay, in two, three years from now, the same, that V won't be the same? So how do we, yeah, we have exit ramp to, to all, to evolve out of that or into something else as we move forward? Looking at the, the interventions that we know we, we have to help bridge the gaps moving forward for students. Um, the community re-engagement, you heard a lot of people talk about that tonight, the community engagement piece. How do we look at those kind of things? Particulars, um, for some of our families, even our families that, that are not only struggling with the realities of, of being in the situation, but also all the things that surround, so how do we build those kind of things, re-engagement of community? Um, some of the lot of costs, we can also go back to March twenty twenty. So what are some of the costs that we spent that is purely because of COVID? Then now we can recruit and leverage resources to do some other things as, as we move forward. So, so, so the in-person piece of it, as we are planning for September, we have a plan, but a lot of the plan depends on what's gonna be the detail of some of these things as we move forward. And what we can't do, um, and we budget it, we have our budget, we have flexible, it's our budget. We're planning for anticipate, unanticipated things ready to reopen. This gives us a, a great opportunity to make sure that, that we can do those things and we can do those things well. So September twenty twenty-one is, is, is gonna be better than September twenty twenty, for sure. But now we wanna make sure that September twenty-one can actually be way better than we even anticipated prior to our, our budget process moving forward. Um, so, so, so that was a big piece of, so safety return to school is also the professional development side. We have a lot of initiative going on right now, the, the dot schedule movement. Um, a lot of focus on, on, on reading. You see here, social-emotional learning, um, which you're talking about here, the professional development that goes with those kind of things. Make sure that, that, yes, it's great that the ladies just presented a great plan, but now we can execute that kind of fidelity. So, so that's where the, the bridge and the gap piece comes into play. Um, the, 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 the equity and the culture responsive pieces. We just had committee members go through training. How do we make sure that that becomes a part of the fabric of us as a school district? Progressive braiding practices, all those things, those lessons learned that we wanted them, how do we systematize and become a part of the fabric of the school system? Professional development is a huge part of that because when people are trained up in all of their skills and mastery, then we don't have to keep doing, investing in those, that particular training. We're gonna do, invest in other training, but we don't have to invest in that over a period of time. So it creates an opportunity for, for things to evolve and wean themselves on and new things wean themselves off as we move forward. Um, two big categories for us, uh, purchase of, of, of educational technology. We've been doing a lot of that because COVID revealed a lot of inequities surrounding technology. And so, 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 so looking at some of those type things um as we move forward. And there's some deep things that, that we have samples of and I was sharing Dr. Wood. We have one of our music teachers, one at elementary school, and she was telling me how she was so curious. She went from music teacher to now teaching, I finished her third or fourth grade. And she was like, oh my God, I, I knew I was, I was gonna say no, but I didn't know how effective I was gonna do, doing it. And so she was concerned because also being an artist, she was concerned about her voice every day and those kind of things. And she had this little cute kind of thing she wore, like the, it's like a, the mini speaker with a mic and, and that thing magnified so well. I'm like, wow. So it's kind of one of those things like, why don't we have more of those things? Because one, for kids, because I know for me, I'm thinking like, man, I came in, how many times you sitting in the meeting, you can't hear the person because they had his microphone too far away from them and trying to be cute and not speaking to the microphone? And now it's a big difference when the sound is right in your ear. And so, so how do we look at classroom, those kind of things? Those investments, those are things that we learn. Or when you're trying to teach a virtual piece, as a teacher, you have to be right up on the microphone because, you know, in order for the kids to, to hear you at home. Um, those, or you find yourself yelling all the time because you think you have to yell in order to protect, to protect your voice. So that's an example of those type things that we're talking about. Um, musical equipment, we saw that when Mr. Rizzella came here to the board and talked about, you know, all of a sudden, we, we, kids can't share instruments anymore. And, and so that kind of unveiled like, whoa, we need to start looking at this closer because if we had so many kids sharing, how many kids were not participating because we're limited by some of those constraints? So how do we open up some of those, um, those avenues? So how do we open up some of those those avenues? So again, I'm sharing those things with you because I'm not going to go through every detail, but give you a flavor of of as we move forward, we're talking about. A big category that that this this funding really focuses on is, is is again, talking about addressing impact of COVID on all students and lower economic students, student disability, English language learners, so spell some things out, that again, basically, making sure that kids who unfortunately have been traditionally disenfranchised do not get, one, worse, or continue to be. And so our focus is, as you know, as a board, we've been talking about equity and opportunities. So we're really talking about how we invest resources in ways to meet the various needs of kids. And so 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 now we started, high school is doing different things, such as, you know, building aesthetic skills, credit recovery, so so kids don't get so buried by one or two mistakes, they didn't simply give up on the school experience, for example, to to looking at some some houses, they're doing some extended day stuff in at the elementary level, some homework help initiatives at the middle school level, to to looking at some bilingual course opportunities at high school levels. So when you think about it, you know, people say, well, you know, if I'm a person who don't speak English, and you're going to drop them to a global history course, first, I don't even understand your language, what's that your history? And I needed, by the way, to pass your reading exam to graduate high school, and all of a sudden, I'm stuck between a rock and a hard place as a young person and has nothing to do with my intelligence. Has everything else to do with all these other factors. So how do we eliminate some of those factors so kids can actually realize success? And so so I'll give you an example of those type of things that we're trying to unpack. Evidence-based strategies for, to meet social emotional pieces, mental health pieces, academic needs. And so so we cross the board from S E L to equity to mental health support, restore the practices, a lot of stuff that you've heard before, Mr. Press mentioned textbooks and materials that that addresses a wide variety of those things. And and Dr. Wood and and academic administrators have been spending a lot of time looking at, or looking at all the textbooks, looking at, the diet group the other day had a great presentation on what are the software packages that we have learned, again, from COVID that helped enhance the learning experience? What are those things that we want to make sure that those things become part for the course within our our schools and resources for our staff and students alike as we move forward? So so big focus on 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 a wide variety of construction materials. At elementary level, a lot of focus on literacy, making sure, again, not only that we have the resources, but we have the the training to to ensure that it's seamless in terms of of pedagogical provisions. So so I'm sharing with the board because what we're doing now is collecting a bunch of ideas, creating a list, and starting to kind of wean out and prioritize, how do we do these things over the course of the next three years as 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 the funds allow us to to move forward with those things? And then the last piece, oops, last one is 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 the the last piece on my evidence-based for after-school program, a lot of folks are after-school. And 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 in different places, different communities have greater needs for after-school programs. If 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 most urban set of schools become the the venue for kids to go to after-school, we're fortunate in our case, there's a ton of things and places that kids can do, but we also know our schools is truly a hub for a lot of after-school programs. I call it the second shift. When you drive to the campus, you're like, okay, oh, another set of kids coming in for different wide variety of reasons as well. So we're looking at some of those kinds of things. Even this summer, we're looking at our summer literacy program, which is our elementary literacy program. How do we provide greater capacity for more kids this summer? And how do we build some of these things moving forward for future years? Looking at, we started some bridge courses a couple of years ago at a high school level. How do we get back to those things once, particularly the state recalibrated with a going with reading exam? How do we make sure that the kids aren't disenfranchised because the state comes in with a new sequence of reading exam and you may not necessarily within line with that? So how do we make sure that as things change and reform comes about, our kids aren't the victims of the change versus the beneficiary of the change? So we're looking at some of those kind of things as as we move forward. A great idea, one that the the regulations changed a couple of years ago about middle school for C T E, for career and technical education, and even Mrs. Barres, the folks have been kind of torn around it. How do we look at the middle school experience differently? I always say, I think middle school has just three years. Three years, we have young people that 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 they're going to, going through all sorts of changes. And so for three years, it's an opportunity for us to really, really help them grow, develop, understand themselves, understand the capabilities. And then, once we get into the much more high-stake, progressive high school, kids are psychologically otherwise ready for that piece of. So so how do we start to unpack and look at the middle school experience differently? Again, this isn't a one-month conversation, two-month conversation, it's a multi-year conversation that we're talking about and using these funds to 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 recreate, re-trude, reimagine certain things that we do. So fast forward three, five years from now, we have this conversation, you're going to say, didn't we always do that? No, we didn't, because remember back in twenty-twenty-one, we had that conversation? And now this is what twenty-twenty-five looks like, this is what twenty thirty looks like. So that's the kind of perspective that we have to have, that kind of vision moving forward in order to be able to realize those things into the future. So 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 again, sharing with the board that 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 this is just example of some stuff that that right now we are starting, if we're planning for for twenty-twenty-one, we got to start planning right now. We can't wait till this time next year to say, what are we going to do in the summer? It's the plan that's looking through the screen or some of the things that we're looking forward to moving forward as well. So so a lot of folks are have a thinking hat on, or as the counselor says, thinking with the upper brain. And and so so we hope that upper brain thinking is is going to 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 yield a lot of things. Even at the early grades, we're looking at class sizes for K-two, as a K-two perspective, we're looking at some of those type of things, we're looking at extra E D K program, more and more kids create opportunities to try to create, again, bridge kids' gaps, because some kids are coming from different preschool situations, which is another conversation we're going to have father next, what we, is the preschool funding piece that we also think in this year, we have to have a plan for that moving forward as well. So so kindergarten jumpstart is a program that we started a couple of years ago. Been great, great way to help boost, as I said, boost kids so they can come in the summer, do some things. So when they come in the first day of school, instead of the kids crying, they come to school, it's the parents truly crying, when they're dropping the kids off, the kid is excited, say, hey, I've been here, I know my routine. And so those kind of things, how do we build those capacity of our young people through some screening processes? And then, we're going to look back, we're going to look back at some costs that we had to 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 basically eat, you know, unintended, it's talking about food service, because we serve meals to a lot of kids at no cost to kids, free meals across the board. It was a cost for us because we used to have to pay staff. So how do we look and try to recoup some of those costs related to food services, or some non-allos cost-related transportation, or a lot of the training things that we went through with our custodial folks, to bring them up to a different level, understanding what training is. So some of those training pieces, we're going to try to see if we can recoup some of those costs. Costs related to a lot of H V A C systems that we put in, I mean, everything from temperature scanners to to the 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 cube, to the backpack sprayers that that people have, all those things are are major expenses that people didn't realize, major expenses that we put in place because we wanted to to ensure that we have a safe, clean environment, that safety was not a question when it came to return to school. So now how can we recoup some of those costs related to that with some of these pieces? And the last one I put on here because right now, if you go to most elementary schools, the cafeteria and the gyms are filled with furniture. And next year, we want those places to be filled with kids. So the question then is, since we can't put all the furniture back in in space unless the new rule says, hopefully someone out there is listening, that that we can actually come back to a space where we're not doing six feet distancing, hopefully from a health perspective, it's not a political decision. I don't make political decisions. If the health allowances allow us to be back in space, allow us to be back in space, you know? And so so if that's the case, allow us to be back in space. If not, if not the case, we need to have contingencies, because I can't tell our teachers, music teachers, phys ed teachers, ah, you know, at least they got to do the same thing. Well, we've had a lot of time now to reflect on different things. And so even right now, trying to get tents is almost impossible, trying to get storage containers. And so that's like one of those things, you never thought that you were going to have problems trying to get storage containers. And and we have, we have quite a few around the campus, those big long ones. So how do we create those to create opportunities? So it's not storing away, we're basically saying, if we haven't used it in a while, we're not storing it, it's not a garbage container. So 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 we have to make that distinction. It's storage for things that we know that in a year will be used in differently, our back in space as COVID truly becomes a part of the rearview mirror or a part of our historical perspective. And so so even those type of things that we're thinking about. So I share that with the board because it goes from 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 what I call the 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 flash sheet to the very mundane. How do we, what do we do with those things if we want that space to be used differently? We have to come up with answers. Same, we can't use, it's not an option. And so so how do we come up with those things as we move forward? So 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 this 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 gives the board a favor of as we unpack some of these grant fundings, some of the things that we're going to do, even shades in classrooms. And I know that as a pet peeve for one of our board members, let's say, Mrs. Hoffman, about, you know, blinds at the render.
I have a screen.
Screen at the render, yes, I knew it was, I knew it was something.
It was me with the shade.
But even those kind of things, the reason why I I want to point it out, it's also how do we create environments? When kids are in the environment, they know, wow, people taking all those things into consideration as we move forward. So 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 right now, we're we're going through this process, we're fine-tuning this presentation, this presentation we put out there on the on the the website, we're going to create a link to ask people to say, take a look at the presentation, what do you think? What do you think we missed? And again, it's the kind of litmus test, give some feedback, because as we unpack this in the coming weeks, we start putting our plans together, recognizing we're talking about multi-year plans, so they're going to be more general than specific in terms of the things that we do, because as we get to the details of the plan, use S E L, for example, we have S E L on there, but I'm not going to put the presentation, but we know that presentation in itself has multiple layers to that that's going to unpack. And so so as we unpack that, for example, what's cost-related to those kind of things, then we'll modify our our respective submission to the state. So this gives, again, I want the board to 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 have a sense of how the federal funds are going to unpack, and and this is all going to unpack very fast. You know, this kind of summarizes a multi-year perspective, we focus on a lot of non-recurring costs. So we're trying to avoid the easy piece of, you know, a lot of pages, just hire a bunch of people. Okay, so hire a bunch of people today, and you're firing a bunch of people tomorrow, or you've paid a lot of money to keep them, and the question is, do we need to keep them? And so therefore, we have to have those thoughts right from the beginning to avoid those kind of things. So sustainability is a big piece of this equation as well. So this this kind of gives you a really more than a thumbnail of of what we're trying to do and how we're approaching the the federal funds, because it's a it's a tremendous opportunity, a lot of work, but you know what, it's worthwhile to do it because it gives us, again, another resource to position us for continued prosperity as a school system moving forward. So I pause there, any questions, thoughts, comments, criticisms, what happened? Mr. Press, I'll address your 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 question somewhat.
Yeah, I I tend to see one of the challenges to academy education is, there's this mentality that you throw money at it and it'll take care of itself. And it rarely works. It's better to build infrastructure, build up expertise, good leadership, we saw it in the first presentation, it's around social emotional learning, and then you bring the money in. And that's kind of like two separate gears that are working, they add a lot of leverage, but you got to hit the gears to interlock, I think that'll happen fairly quickly. Do you see anything besides the social emotional learning that we should be looking at, like in a presentation a month or two from now? Or any other?
For this year?
Yeah, yes, this year.
I would love to tell you a good story, but no. I'm sorry, we have, we have the twenty-third meeting, which we.
I'm trying to say, not not school year, the calendar, maybe.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
In September, a lot of these things will be unpacked with the board.
Yeah.
I thought you were talking about this, like.
No, 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 I'm, I'm getting past it.
You scared me the most.
No.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, yeah, a lot of these things will unpack as we get more details included. So it would drive this document, a lot of this document, because, by the way, a lot of this stuff is also consistent with our goals. Because what we can't have is, we're doing this, oh, we have a couple of our money, and these are our goals. It's kind of like, well, our goals, we're fortunate, it's our infrastructure, that we've always, we're always having a forward, a future perspective in our goal development anyway. And so so a lot of these things, like, oh, wow, now instead of waiting two years to potentially do something, we can expedite certain things, or we prepare the foundation to do something even more so two years out. So so everyone is working in the same direction, because the last thing we might have is people doing this and doing this, but something is going to sacrifice, because we can't do two things well. So versus how do we merge and find intersection out of it and do those things well that we know we can do well and keep positioning us moving forward?
Moving on to other sections of our night. Consent items, treasury, can I get a motion? Justice first, Jason second, any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. Minutes, May eleventh, we're going to do a separate, I think, topic out on the eleventh, so we, I get a motion on the eleventh. Out of Saints, Joe is first, Jason is second. All in favor? Motion passes. May twenty-fifth, topic's back, I get a motion, Todd is first, Bob is second. All in favor? Motion passes. Action items. Business. Number one, certification of vote, bus purchase proposition, can I get a motion? Yomi is first, Justice second, is there any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. Number two, certification of vote, capital project referendum, can I get a motion? Justice first, Joe is second. Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. Number three, we have moved off to another meeting down the road, so we will skip to four health services contracts, can I get a motion? Todd is first, Jason second, any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. Biz, there are seven, we have ice cream, physical, education supplies, bread and rolls, milk, summer groceries, forward finishing, boiler, and D H W maintenance and repair, HVAC plant service and repair, technology supplies, snack items, beverages, natural gas. Can I get a motion? Yomi is first, Jason is second, is there any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. Seven, uh, sorry, six, capital project, middle ward, garantion, HVAC, can I get a motion? Justice first, Joe is second, is there any comments? All in favor? Motion passes.
Can that happen?
Yeah, I hope it is. Number seven, disposal obsolete furniture, equipment, and textbooks, can I get a motion? Yomi is first, Bob is second, any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. I'm going to combine contracts, I'm going to combine A through D on number eight, so IMS, adara, that cabling, security, C D W G, Adobe Creative Cloud for Enterprise, C D W G Soundtrap Suite, custom computer specialists, Explorer Learning, General Audit Tool, Software House International, Shop Point, SysCloud, iSupport, Rongo. B, special ads, Saratoga Four Winds, C, Seesaw Licensing, and D, Tyler Technologies. Is there, can I get a motion? Justice first, Bob is second, any comments on any of these?
I just have a question for Mr. McBarrett. For, I think Tyler's the one for the buses, but the ones for I N S, all these are sole source?
He's not here.
Oh, is that here? Oh, okay. I didn't know these were sole source.
I'll give that to you on that, because, you know, when I hear sole, I'm thinking like, soul.
Hmm, oh.
I'm just, I'm just joking with you. It's late at night, so you have to add that into it. So I'll follow, but make sure that this would be.
I mean, all, all the detail was there, I just was wondering, with, with these types of contracts, you know, they're all, they all appear to be for about a year out, so. Otherwise, I was just, I was just curious about the bidding.
All in favor? Motion passes. Number nine, I'm going to combine contract renewals, Freeman Project Management Additional Services, Mosaic, Merrick, Naviance Print Management Services, Deer Oaks EAP, can I get a motion? Todd is first, Bob is second, comments?
Yeah, so with Freeman, with this one, I do have a concern with this one. This is a very large, the, the extension is 200K, the, the regular contract is 731, so it costs a million dollars to buy it. I don't know that this one's, I mean, for as long as I've been on the board, I don't think this one's gone up to bid. And I, I know that under municipal law that you can exclude, you can get an exception for, for certain contracts. But also, there's, there's one of four B talks about procedures per due diligence for these types of contracts, and you don't put that up to bid.
I, you know, it's interesting, I mean, I did have this conversation with Dr. Robinson, but I am going to say that, Dr. Robinson, you've got more history with Augie and how he did this. That was a question, do you want to expand upon that?
Yeah, so, so, so technically, this doesn't follow the same bidding requirements. So the same thing with our service contracts, like, so for our terms, we don't have to bid every year. We go through a due diligence process and I don't know how many years back, we went through one. We were kind of gauging it and we brought in, I'm not going to say a company because they didn't get it. Another big project management company kind of gave a pricing point on it, just to make sure that we were being honest about deliberations that came out. And it wasn't even close in terms of what they wanted cost and the quality of what we get. And so, so one of the things, and this typical renewal curve is when we have to have new projects coming up. And so there's overlap that goes with the projects as well. So that's the reason why we're there, architects here, is because we have a new project coming up as well. So, so, so we don't necessarily bid it every year, but we don't have to. But different points in the year, over the cycle, we do a test in the water. See where's our price point in comparison to what project management companies are charging for some of these pieces. And in many cases, they're just charging a flat X amount of percent of whatever the project is. And, and, and which is far more expensive. And two, the quality of getting your person on the ground is so critical. I've been here 16 years and all the projects we have gone through, we have never gone over budget. In fact, we have had projects, we've visioned finances from one to the next because we're watching, we have someone there every day watching the project, working with the contractors, making sure what things are doing, taking place. Give a perfect example, the technology, we're in right now, we just met on a day, we talked about, okay, how do we hold back from certain DCs until they get certain things done? And if I was a typical project manager, that project is done, I get paid, I leave, and I wait till the next project come in. I'm not staying after the fact. And I think relationship with Augie is, is different because in many ways, yes, he's on contract, but the expectation is he's our eyes on the field.
He knows that these schools in and out.
So, so I'm comfortable with the pieces of it and particularly since he's also been working closer to Barb. That's why the additional service piece, because we, we'll start at some point in the summer looking to, to backfill the director of facilities. And we didn't want to rush into that because, quite frankly, Barb, Barb and Augie, what we need to do to prepare for that next person to come in, they're doing the groundwork with those kind of things. So, so I, I, I'm not sure if Mr. Chase could offer more insight into the contract other than it's kind of spelled out and we look at it from a cost benefit. The cost we pay over the course of maybe four years, because mainly it's how, it's the fact that the project is scheduled to the last portion of, if it goes on time, start with summer of 2024. So, so four, maybe five years, that's a long time for someone to be able to, to monitor everything from design to execution to pumpless, to founder cost support. And then on, on top of that, we do all these mini projects that we do all the time, we exclude districts and monitoring those because the Aranjan project is a perfect example of that. Off sequence, but we're going to have to have someone there to make sure that product picked up. It's not a part of a referendum piece, it was initially carved out with urgency. So those are the kinds of things that the project management company would be paying at a cost to, that's a part of the progression. You're here with us for five years and anything, everything you do in construction related, you're going to be a part of it. So that's how, kind of, let's see the whole thing.
So I appreciate what you're saying, but, but even with the, the 50K here, that open ended amount, that could be handled with changeable.
No, 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 that has nothing to do with that. That's, 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 that has to do with our internal, because we don't have a directive operating. Steve West, the person who's here, is not returning. So, so just like Barb is interim right now. And quite frankly, if Barb wasn't so great, we'd have been compelled to hire her. But because Barb is so good and, and, and not quality and cost effective, it has borrowed a lot of time to get a lot of stuff done. So you're saying to Augie is that when you're doing, your project, your capital project manager is your primary piece. If we need you to do some other things, that's a whole, that's, that's a separate piece. That's, that's where we, it's been claimed for X amount of hours of work at the $45 hour rate beyond your capital project work that you're doing. And he's been doing stuff for us this, well, the past two years, but that, even when Steve was here, they're transitioning over a lot of things. So that's a whole different.
So it's a contract employee agreement?
Yeah, yeah. And, and it's hourly rate, that we, we want to establish hourly rate, so, so we're not getting into, okay, can I get this? Can I get hourly rate and it's going through captain's office that, that X amount of hours I put in this week for this thing that we're working on related to facilities, this separate from capital project.
So why is the contract not attached?
So I'm not sure it's me.
It's not.
Yeah, this is an issue, can we just move this and not send on my own?
So, so, I'm not sure.
I, I don't, I don't think we would normally attach a, a, a contract to the.
I mean, I, I think.
Matty would win. Have we done that in the past?
I mean, the original contract probably goes back to 2005 or something. We've just continued to do an addendum.
To, to the original contract.
Every time that we have a new project.
Is that maybe something you want to review?
Yes.
So no, we can share the original contract, that's not a problem.
I, I have some comments that might sort of find it middle ground users. We used to have a supervisor groundkeeper, Mr. Patton. And, and so he was the go-to person to make sure that everything outside the building is done properly. He retired, and Mr. West. Mr. West was here for a period of time, but I don't think really was able to stab himself in the role. And, and I think.
He took a leave.
He, he left, okay. We have some challenges, I think, with, with the grounds, but we've also seen some great things being done during COVID. We had the grounds working.
Signage.
Signage and all these things. And really, we've turned a combination of Mrs. Saliker and Augie.
Mrs. Saliker is an employee of the district.
Yeah, yes, but she, she runs inside.
And I think the, the lines are blurry between his project management services and an employee of the district.
I, I, I would say we're, in lieu of him becoming an employee of the district, because he's not on a, on benefits, he's not going to end up paying him that additional services, this sort of filled with gap. And, and, and so, in, in lieu of hiring a replacement for Mr. West, which I think is something we do want to do. Okay, that, that is on our list. But we've learned from other districts, and this is sort of like a conversation I picked up at the sidebar, is that there's not a great candidate coming forward saying, I'm going to do this. It's not like when we have an elementary school teacher, we have 50 people applying to be elementary school teacher.
You gotta find the right sector.
We got, we got, we can't do a job right. And whenever I, I look at what an HR person does within resources, they say one of the things you always want to avoid is, is putting in a candidate that's not qualified. So we're kind of covering the gap with, you know, Freeman Project Additional Services, as well as the insight and expertise of Mrs. Saliker. It's not, it's not perfect, but it is allowing us to do a lot of the stuff we need to do on the ground. And so that, that's how I'm, I think you're asking the right questions, this is a great line of inquiry. But I'm comfortable with what we've done in the past, our record with other project management, or, or just record on projects never coming in overlooked. Okay? That carries a lot of weight that says, I think we're getting this stuff managed properly.
It's, it's good work.
Yeah.
It's, it's above par. It's way above par.
Yeah, and, and I think you got a great insight in that we don't want to be committed to the point where we're wedded, we're married to a special services provider. Okay? We want to, you know, look, look on with an eye, it's kind of like having, you know, your, your, your personal doctor, your personal attorney. You, you value the level of time, the insight, the expertise, their, their, their continuity that they, that they bring. It's much different than bidding for copy paper or food where you basically want to bid every, every year out of the office like bids out there. So it, to me, it's a, it's a good blending of something because we don't have a great candidate coming forward yet. We'll figure that out in a year, hopefully faster. The, the last thing is there is an example in our bids where we have ended a relationship, okay? And that involves what we've done with the, the company that provided the, the energy services. Yeah, so that's an example where I think the district is looking at it with a fine eye of an auditor that we value to say, you know, it's come up for bid and it's become up in a very fair time interval and you look at it and you said, look, we're going to go with somebody else. Okay? And my feeling is we're doing this the right way, asking the right questions. It may not be, you know, fully lined up to all the expectations, but within the year where you have to rely on some personal judgment and the right type of discussion to, to ensure that you're on the right path. So I feel comfortable with both, with the questions you asked and with sort of the way we're taking this amount of votes. I feel, I feel very comfortable voting.
And this was a discussion at the leadership meeting as well, that we've got it out.
So the one thing I'd like to add is, you know, when, when we have, we have a provider that we like, like with Audit, we did put them, put it up to bid and we don't put it up to bid every year. And, you know, I'm looking at the quotes, we came up with criteria and we ended up bringing back the same auditor. So, but, but in that process, you know that you, you, you're getting a value, right? But I think it's a necessary process to go through periodically, I'm not saying every year, for something like this. But 16 years is a long time. And I think, you know, it's just part of the due diligence process.
I, I, I agree. Now, one of the things that we're different than a private business is that all this is in public record. And if there is somebody out there that thinks that they can provide an equal service at a lower cost, they're, they're perfectly able to go to Mrs. Chase and say, look, I, I can get you a better beat along on this. And I think that's happened on some of the, the energy services contracts. So there, there is room for competition. At the same time, if you had your, your personal doctor, do you, you know, you're not like comparing food, okay? You might, you might shop in a different grocery store to check it out every couple of times a year, okay? But you don't shop your doctor around. You, you, you treat the doctor as, as, as a service, special services provider that you have to maintain that.
It's about trust, it's about how the relationship is there.
It, it is about the relationship, I'm not saying it's not, but I'm saying that, that we, we have our responsibility to our task. And so.
No, that's about, yeah, so just the one thing I add, I mean, the biggest question, putting things up to bid is you want to make sure you're still getting quality and you're getting competitive price. Quality, it sounds like we've got kind of a problem, we have a long track record. I think I heard that we've done, we, we have some sense of the competitiveness of the price we're getting recently, but gives us some confidence. So I mean, that just from a procurement standpoint, that's what you're looking for, that you're getting.
I'm looking for that competitive part.
And you're getting competitive price. Going through the bid process, you know, too often can be annoying, but as, as long as you're meeting those thresholds. So I think that we're doing the due diligence and we know we're still within a competitive range and we have confidence in what we're getting, you know, that, that to me is what I'm looking for from a procurement standpoint. So I, I just want to put that out there too.
I agree.
That's what you do, Jason, so I get it.
Yeah.
Okay, any further comments? All in favor? What, what I'm saying?
No, I'm not saying, I'm saying that.
Okay. So you got, you got six?
I'm saying it just because.
Okay, you got a call, you got a call to vote, yeah. Todd is a yes.
So wait a minute, we have to break this up then?
You have to break it up.
Wait, I don't.
She's only abstaining.
She's just saying no.
She's not saying no.
So we can't.
She's not saying no.
Okay.
So break that one out, separate from all the others.
All right, I'm going to go back through them again. Number nine, contract renewals, Freeman, one, we'll do this first one. A, Freeman Project Management Additional Services, can I get a motion? Gusta is first, Bob is second, we heard the comments. All in favor? We have six, Todd is a yes, Bob is a yes, Jason is a yes, Joe is a yes, Gusta is a yes, Deanna is a yes, Naomi is a no. Okay. B, C, D, and E, I'm doing again, Mosaic, Merrick, Naviance Print Management Services, Deer Oaks EAP, can I get a motion please? Gusta is first, Jason is second, all in favor? Motion passes. Naomi, your name, your hand did not go up on that.
Um, I, I want to make a comment on Mosaic. I, I looked at that one close and we'd like to know how many buildings to talk about, because the contract doesn't say that. It says B per building. Per project. Per project.
It's the 26.5 million, then we just passed, that's what this whole thing is about.
I know. So with Mosaic, I'm just saying that in the contract, so if, if it's a year contract, it's not, it's different, the whole contract is there. I did look through it, I'm just asking, what is the total amount of the contract? Or is it?
It's total range and is it just going to save all the range?
The, the total amount of the contract is going to vary because it's dependent on construction cost. So whatever the bids come in at, that's going to be what the 8.4% is based on. The $5,000 is per building project number. And, you know, we're starting out with probably every building, but we may do additional projects as we have money available. So I can't really tell you how many about $5,000 charges.
So the bottom line is the board, the community approve of reference, 26.5?
Correct.
So at a maximum amount, you do 26.5 by 8.4%. So it's roughly $2.2 million that you could potentially pay Mosaic architect for this project. So, so that's why I think it's kind of ironic, because one side we just argued, someone who's going to try to save us $3 million.
So no, 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 so you missed understanding me. With, with that one, my, my biggest concern is that we haven't really done the due diligence and we've been working with them.
I respect your concern, I respect your concern, but our due diligence is about productivity. What happens with projects? Are projects on time? Are projects done well? Are projects under budget? When those things happen, that's a great experience. And, and that's a criteria that we use for them as well as our architects, because we spend a ton of money on our architect who has been, by the way, in the district, they've designed every building in the district over the last 60 plus years. And there's a reason why each year we look at these things, because we say, what's the cost of a new person coming in now trying to understand all these buildings and saying that we're going to charge you 13% when we get eight and a half, even though we would love to play two and a half to, to get it done? And so there's all the factors that comes into play because of the ability to get projects done and done fast, when I say fast effectively, because people know the landscape, they know the architectural landscape of the, of the school district. So we don't have to rent a new person if we try to understand the system for him to know anything. They literally, Mosaic architect that goes back to God's Chamber of Resurrection, designed every building in this school district over the past 60 plus years. And we have had debt to a different architectural firm and we have tried different architectural firms parallel to them. Just don't compare for the quality of what we get and for the cost of what we spend. And as long as that equation holds, that's the reason why we go back to those individuals that the equation holds. And so we test that all the time, not outcomes. So, so that's the due diligence piece is what, what's the end result of this whole piece of, and not necessarily what's the cost? Because we have gone cheap on certain beds and realized that, whoa, especially some furniture beds, cheaper cost and three years from later, we turn it all out because we're garbage. And so now we realize, let's go back to the proven piece that might be a little more expensive, but it lasts us longer and over time it's more cost effective. I shared it with you because it was, it was an interesting contrast, because all both are working with the same thing. The same 26.5 million dollar project, then we hope we're going to get $30 million value out of it by maximizing other things that we do within the system as well. So that's why I want to share that perspective with a larger board. Now, I mean, I understand your point, full of.
Yeah, so it isn't that I'm saying that the work that they do is not good. It's, and the thing is, is that, is that I think we could have done this analysis and, and, you know, so our taxpayers, our voter people, you know, confident, knowing that, that we're, we're not saying, you know, because they, they could build up around it. And, and I wanted to avoid going there with, with, you know, saying why I think it's important. Because I don't want you to think that, I don't think that what has happened to Dave is not going to work. That's not my point. It's, it's about doing, just some due diligence work to show that we're looking at the cost and we're getting a good value. And it isn't just saying that, it's, you know, doing some additional steps and that, that's where I was, that was why I.
I guess, yeah, I guess, you know, the next time when, you know, Augie's here, we do bring them up and we talk, you know, it, it might be, might be time at that point to ask questions and things like that, when you have them, they're out here, Mosaic comes, Augie comes, and we talk about that.
But, but it's not something.
And I understand, Naomi, I think your bottom line is where you're going here is you want to be transparent to the public. And I think Bob is saying that, we certainly appreciate that. But I think we're doing our due diligence on the backend as well. And the work is shown throughout the district. I mean, I think Jason said it, if you compare and we go out and we do the due diligence, I don't think, we're good. I don't, I think we, we do it, I mean, you're in an audit, you're in audit process too, we ought to be checking that, I'm sure we are. So I'm not, I'm not quite clear on what, we could take another step, but I think that's a conversation for another time at this point. So we're not going to.
Right, I understand, you know what I mean? Okay, so I will vote no again from a big decision.
Okay, so let's go through that one more time. Contract renewals. Did I just? All right, so Mosaic, B, can I get a motion? Bob is first, Gusta is second, all in favor? Todd is a yes, Bob is a yes, Jason is a yes. Todd is a yes, Bob is a yes, Jason is a yes, Joe is a yes, Gusta is a yes, Deanna is a yes, Naomi is a no. C, Merrick and Naviance, can I get a motion, please? Bob, first, Gusta is second. Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. D, Print Management Services, can I get a motion? Bob is first, Joe is second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion passes. Deer Oaks EAP, can I get a motion? Bob is first, Jason is second. Any comments? Motion, uh, all in favor? Motion passes. 10, Reappropriation Tax Certiori Settlements, can I get a motion? Bob is first, Todd is second. Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. Scholarships and local grant donations with certain and complete appreciation tonight, can I get a motion? Todd is first, Joe is second. Any comments? All in favor? Motion passes. Students, Mrs. Mylott, please.
Any questions on the CSD and CPSC recommendations?
Thank you, can I get a motion? Todd is first, Gusta is second. Any comments or questions? All in favor? Motion passes. Personnel, Mrs. Bush, approval of staffing recommendations.
Yes, good evening. Along with the, sorry, the staffing recommendations tonight, I would like to recommend Mr. Raymond Nardelli, who is in our audience, as our new Director of Information and Management Services. Mr. Nardelli will be joining us with 27 years of educational experience. Um, he has a bachelor's from Jekyll University and a master's from West Virginia University. He's currently the Director of Technology at Bethlehem. And with the recommendation, will join us officially as of July 6th.
Mr. Nardelli, this is your, uh, this is your hazing. And this is a bear topic meeting, so congratulations, you're in.
And I have a few retirements to give you.
Yes.
All right. Our certificed staff, Mr. Doug Mers will be retiring after 31 years at the end of the school year. Anthony Barreto will be retiring as a bus monitor after three years. Michelle Berger retiring after 27 years as a library typist. Gina Downey retired after 21 years, senior typist, um, at TESADO. Suzanne Newell, retirement after 20 years as a special education aide. And Molly Smith retiring after 25 years, senior payroll clerk in our finance office. So those are the retirements and the, uh, recommendation of Mr. Nardelli this evening.
Can I get a motion? Gusta is first, Bob is second. Uh, congratulations Doug, Michelle, Gina, Suzanne, and Molly. Um, so all in favor? Motion passes. And policies and procedures, Mrs. Turner.
Second meeting being presented to you tonight for approval. Last month, we had a lot of policy coming forth for first reading. Are there any questions?
Can I get a motion? Thank you. Okay. Joe is first, Gusta is second. All in favor? Motion passes. Did we have any public comments that came through? Oh, okay, I'll hit that in a second. Um, for the good of the order, I have one announcement that I will make. Uh, we are, for our new board members are three, which two not so much, but one does. Uh, we will have the, we are changing the board orientation, seeing, I'm sure you have the email, I hope. Um, from June 10th and to July, we put that three dates out. Um, so we'll look forward to your response on that and then we'll plan that.
I have one.
Yep.
Uh, this concerns advocacy, I'll please mark a calendar, 16 July is the date that each school district that's a member of ISRA can't submit their resolution. But then would be, uh, voted on in the October business meeting. Well, I've got several ideas. What I'd like to do is our next meeting, prior to that, I'll send an email discussing that and you could present it. But a couple of those ideas might be to, uh, a resolution to improve our foundation aid, to ensure we get the most accurate data brought into the foundation aid, uh, process. Uh, that was discussed with one of our state senator visits and then actually generated a letter that went to the, uh, the senate leader. So, you know, we, we, this is an opportunity to work with one of our local elected officials in state senate to, to align how we want to, you know, further improve foundation aid. That's one of the potential resolutions. Another might be the integration of climate changes and how school, is, is done by school districts. Again, these are very broad ideas, but I'd like to flesh them out. Uh, a third one might be to make APPR more of a professional exchange versus what, how it's perceived today as almost a arbitrary, capricious review. There's a lot of discussion on APPR. I think this is something that this year it would be useful for districts to, to bring forward. As you can see today, there's been, tonight, there's been a lot of discussions on this, this new funding, which I think is a higher priority to make sure we get that right. But I think if we, we do this, we could present, uh, I'd like to solicit board members of opinion on which one we focus on. And in the first meeting of next year in early July, April, July, so we'd be the time that we would agree on the language. So that's how we might proceed. I don't see anybody thinking it's a bad idea because we'll have the diggards and we'll, we'll, we'll circulate some ideas to put on the.
Very good. That's great, Bob. Thank you for your effort always and your time that you put into that.
Thanks.
Anybody else have any comments? So at this point, uh, can I have a motion for adjournment? Jason's first, Gusta's second. All in favor? Meeting has ended.